Okay. Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council, September 6, 2016. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. We'll start with an invocation by our good friend Mia Walgren, practitioner of the Christian Science Church, and I will follow that with a pledge of allegiance. So please stand and join us if you choose.
Before I lead us in prayer, I would like to thank the City of Oak Harbor for three outstanding community events: the car show and hydro races, the Pig Fest, and the music festivals. These events were free for all to enjoy, truly examples of the love this city has for its people. Let us pray. Father, Mother God, thank you for your beloved children who are gathered in these chambers tonight as children of infinite love. It's that love that moves our mayor and our council members to serve in these positions. Not selfish interest, but self-desire, selfless desire, which moves them forward in meeting our needs. Dear God, remind us to be still and know that your wisdom is ever available to direct and protect us in the decisions we are called upon to make. Our strength is in proportion to where we place our trust. May we not forget your words: "Trust in the Lord with all thine heart, and lean not unto thine own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy paths." As each and every decision comes before them, assure them you are with them every step of the way. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, may be seated. I think the first item of business is we have Councilperson Heisen is unable to be with us. So, yes, Councilman Olmberg.
I move that we provide an excused absence for Councilmember Heisen.
Second.
Motion, and second, to excuse Councilperson Heisen from this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion was by Olmberg, second by Councilman Campbell. Okay. And we, item, let me see, item number one, approval of agenda. So, Councilman Servadia.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Councilman Servadia, second by Counselor Muns. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have no proclamations this evening. However, item number two B, we have, under honors and recognitions, we have our senior center celebrating 30 years and we have our senior, the leader of our senior center, Mary Anderson.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm very excited to have this opportunity to tell you about the 30th anniversary of the senior center. One of the things that's quite fortunate for all of us is that somebody did a very, very good job of keeping scrapbooks for the center. So we have books and books of articles going all the way back to, from 1983, which was several years before the center was open, clear up until the early 2000s, and then it was clear that we had gotten into technology and some of those things just disappeared, which was unfortunate. So on September 5 of 1986, there was a ribbon-cutting celebration for a 8,000-square-foot building, which is the senior center. It didn't come easily. It took over 10 years for folks, a group of steering committee that had gotten together, members from all over the county, from the city of Oak Harbor, from special organizations, AARP, area associations on aging. They'd all gotten together and they had tried several times, once in 1982, again in 1983, to apply for grant money to build the center. And in 1984, they were successful. That resulted in a donation of land from the city on the spot where the center sits now, and a $750,000 community block grant was used to build the senior center. The city of Oak Harbor just prior to that had been the largest city in the state that did not have some type of area for its seniors, and all of the programs that existed for seniors were scattered all over. So now this was finally a place for it all to come together. So forwarding, well, actually, before I forward, I will tell you that when they first opened, some of the classes that were held were dart lessons, and of course they had darts as the activity, painting, knitting, checkbook balancing, and then they even had scheduled a special trip to Leavenworth's Christmas lighting ceremony. So we still have cards. We don't have darts. We still have knitting and painting. At that time, there were a couple of pool tables in a special billiards room, which we also still have. But now in addition to that, we have clogging, and you can see some of the pictures up here. I just posted these. We have clogging and line dancing classes. Tonight at 7 o'clock, there's a couples two-step class that's just starting, which means I really do have to make this short because I need to be over there to help make that happen. We also have yoga and tai chi. We have a special room that has a lapidary class and a whole group that meets together on Thursday night to do wire wrapping. That's actually a combination of seniors and many teenagers that come and learn from this group that are there together. We also have pickleball, which is our newest activity that we just started, and some of you may have seen on the tennis courts right, the old tennis courts by where the public market is. That was a relationship between the school district and the city. The senior center got a fair, actually, a lot of help from the Parks Department of the city. Hank Nytum was very helpful in helping us connect with the school district. And between those groups, they painted and cleaned those, and we have over 20 people that are out there playing pickleball right now, and they're getting ready to start playing indoors as soon as we secure a site, which we're very close to doing. So very, very exciting. We now have over 50 trips a year. This year alone, we've gone to the Mariners game. We've gone to see Andrea Pochelli, Bouchard Gardens, and the horse races. And in about a week or so here, there's going to be a kayaking trip. So those are the types of changes that have been made. And in addition to that, the building has gotten used. Many, many other organizations have been using it, but in particular, we have the State Insurance Benefits Advisors Group, the SHIBA Group, that is there every Tuesday to advise folks 65 and over about Medicare and insurance options. We have the AARP Tax Advisors that will start in January using the space every week, a day every week, to help anybody, not just senior center members, with their taxes at no charge. We've had Island Transit meet in there for some community groups. We've had Sketchit Valley teaches a class. Wouldbe Health has a patient advocates group. They'll be coming to talk and do some group presentations for the community there. Wouldbe Playhouse will be using our stage shortly for a, the auditions for the Wouldbe Youth Has Talent or Oak Harbor Has Talent. They'll be doing that in trade for providing a show for the seniors right before they do their show for the community. And of course, then we have churches and rental, other special groups that rent it. One of the things that really, and I'm going to make this really, really quick. I'm not going to read like the whole article or anything, but I did have a chance to read an article that was written by the former center director, Bridgette Demuth, who was the original center director, and she wrote this very long and really wonderful article on the second anniversary of the center. But one of the things that she was reflecting on is the effort that it took to get the senior center built. Prior to this building, there had been other plans. There had been potentially a plan to put a community center that also held senior services right in that same general area, and this was before the pool was built. They, there were decisions that were trying to be made between, should it be a pool first or a community center first, or, you know, all kinds of interesting decisions were going on. But this group that had come together that believed that a center needed to be built really, really persisted. And one of the things that she wrote on the second anniversary really inspired me very, very much, it says, "Those who thought it would never happen were wrong. Those who thought once it happened and the building was open that it wouldn't be used were wrong. Those who lament that Oak Harbor doesn't have a youth center or a community center can learn something from their elders. It isn't an either-or question. It's a how much do you want it and are willing to work for it question." And I think that that stands today in many, many of the things that we continue to talk about every day in the city and in the community. And finally, I would just like to say that we know that we're in this together, and I know that I can speak on behalf of the center members and staff when I say that we are grateful. We are grateful for the city tax dollars that are used to support the center, and we are grateful for the donations of time, money, talent, and materials that come from many, many members of the community. So thank you for your support, and I hope you'll join me in celebrating 30 years and looking forward to many more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I've been fortunate to deliver a couple of state-of-the-city addresses around town to organizations, one to the Seroptimus, one to the Lions Club, and I can tell you that I love during that process to be able to brag about our senior center and the job that Mary's doing. I was able to attend and help her thank a group of volunteers, and it was a large room full of people that she has helping her there volunteering, and you do a lot with a little. Thank you very much, Mary. Okay, item number two B two is to present National Fire Academy certification, and I see our fire chief, Ray Merrill, approaching the podium. Welcome, Ray.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I gotta pull out my glasses these days. It's getting tough. Just a little bit. Paul came to me, where'd you go? You're hiding back there. Come on up here. First of all, hi Mom and Dad for Paul. They're streaming live back on the East Coast, and they wanted to watch this. Paul came to me about three years ago, and he says, "What can I do to be better?" And realize, Paul has been with us forever and a day. He started out here as a volunteer years ago, was part of our paid-on-call program, got hired on, became one of our captains, and Paul is known around the state for his activities, his training, being utilized at the Academy at North Bend, islandwide, and across the nation. So it's an asset to have Paul. So to Paul's Mom and Dad, you raised a heck of a young man, and we're quite proud of him. But he came to me and he said, "Chief, I'd like to go to the National Fire Academy." And that's no easy undertaking because to go to this, let me give you an idea about the academy. It's back in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and you go back for two weeks at a time, and the National Fire Academy pays your airfare. They pay for all the classes. They pay for all your housing. You only have to pay for your meals. So we forked up to 300 and some odd dollars to pay for his meal for two weeks, but it's a really good education. But the classes go from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night, and then all your homework on top of that. So there's not a lot of free time. And he said to me, he said, "I'd like to go to the managing officer program." And in order to do so, there were some prerequisites. He had to be a first responder. He had to have his AA degree or 60 hours into his bachelor's degree. He had to get into first responders, National Incident Management System, National Response Center. And to do that, he had to make an application. I had to sign off on it, which I begrudgingly did because I really didn't want to send him back there. And he went back the first year, took application of community risk reduction and transitional safety leadership. And in between that time, now realize these classes go from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night. Imagine sitting in college from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00, five days in a row, and then four or five hours of homework on top of that every night. There's a lot of work that goes into the academy. They're very rigid as far as the work that you need to do, and you have to set a high standard to get there. Paul has to make application, and then he has to be approved in order to attend. And a lot of background goes into him before he ever gets to the National Fire Academy. We were proud to send Paul back there. In between the two years, he had to do a program here in Oak Harbor, how we can be better. What can we as the department be better, and how can you utilize this program in any fire department in the United States? So he had to write a thesis on, in this case, he did one on community risk reduction, operational safety, and the safety of firefighters. So now it's back at the National Fire Academy, and anybody can draw on that and utilize that in their program. And then he went back for a second year for contemporary training concepts for fire and EMS and analytical tools for decision-making. He came back to me and he said, "That was a lot of work." And I said, "Yeah, probably was." And he said, "I enjoyed it. I want to go back for more because the training is fantastic." So a plaque came the other day, and it's a rather nice one from the National Fire Academy, and it says, "National Fire Academy, in recognition of successful completion of the requisite courses for the study of the National Fire Academy under the authority granted by the 114th Congress of the United States of America, awarded the certificate of completion of the managing officer program upon Paul Visant Schor." It's got three names in there, so you know it's really good, "with all honors, privileges, and responsibilities thereto, awarded this 17th day of June 2016 Federal Emergency Management Agency," and it's signed by both of the directors. So Paul, it's a pleasure to have you in the fire department. I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
It's speech time. The two years was, it was a trying time. I had a lot of support from my family on the East Coast who's watching it now. I also had a lot of support from my family here in Oak Harbor and throughout the, on the West Coast as well. Couldn't have done it without them through this whole two years. Couldn't have done it without Chief and Chief Buxton to support it, going back with the program. So, thank you for allowing me to go, and great to be here in Oak Harbor.
So let's take a, just a five-minute break here to go shake Paul's hand and congratulate Okay, I'd like to reconvene this regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. And that was a great presentation by our fire chief from the National Fire Academy. Next on our agenda is item number two C, Community Presentations, 2015 Annual Police Department Report.
Well, I hope that you're not going to be too disappointed in me tonight, Council, because I don't intend to do a 37-slide PowerPoint on a 2015 Police Department Report. And if you were expecting that, I apologize. I do hate to disappoint you, which you've got a very busy schedule tonight, and I really don't think you need me up here nine months late trying to give you a report from 2015. The only thing I will tell you is if you get a chance to talk to Meg Massey and give her a hug and say thank you, almost all the work on this report was done by Meg during some frankly challenging times for the police department, and I really appreciated not just the work that she did, but the seriousness that she brought to that endeavor. It was very important to her to produce a quality report. We toned it down a little bit from years past, but I think that she did a great job. Just my perspective on your police department is you've got a wonderful child identification program that's developing in this community. The police department in 2015 acquired child ID equipment that allows them to fingerprint children, for example, and provide that information to parents should worse come to worse and you need to be able to identify your child. The thing that you as council people, like council people, need to know in respect to that is that all that identification information is provided to the parent. The police department, the government, doesn't maintain some kind of a file on kids in the community, and in the event a child was to disappear, the parent then would have the responsibility of providing that information to law enforcement. The two other programs I think that are worthy of mention here are National Night Out. We did that just a few weeks ago. That's a wonderful program in this community that you'll find highlighted in the report, as well as the School Resource Officer Program. Those are two very well-developed programs here that I think you, as a community, should be proud of. So I encourage you to go to the link that's provided in your packet to take a look at the Oak Harbor 2015 Annual Report, and I promise you on behalf of your next police chief that it will arrive in a more timely fashion next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Thank you. Item number three, Citizen Comment Period. Citizens may comment on subject, subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are recorded properly, state your name clearly into the microphone. Please limit comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. And I think first on our list is Lynn Murphy from Puget Sound Energy. Hi, Lynn. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lynn Murphy. I'm with Puget Sound Energy. I think I've met a few of you over the last couple of weeks. I'm here to let you know that there's been a few staffing changes at Puget Sound Energy, and I am now your local government affairs representative. Anything that you have concerns or questions or even good things to say about PSC, I am your person to interact with. The nice thing is, is I was born and raised here in Oak Harbor, and I'm pretty happy to be back here in town, working in the city that I grew up in. It's pretty rewarding for me. The other thing I wanted to talk about tonight was I understand that the southern end of the island has been hit by phone scams, specifically scammers that are calling our business customers and a few of our residential customers, inquiring them and requiring them to make a payment over the phone for delinquent bills. These are scams. The southern end of the island has been hit pretty hard, and I suspect that Oak Harbor may be next for our business owners. So here, I'm just here to tell you a few things that you can do. First and foremost, do not make any payments over the phone if you're a residential or a business customer. If you suspect that this is a suspicious call or a scam call, please hang up and call our 1-88-CALL-PSC number to verify that you actually are delinquent on your bill and you do need to make those payments. Again, that number is 1-88-CALL-PSC. Customers should know that if they do receive these calls and they're not quite sure if it's suspicious, you will receive several notifications from PSC by mail before we actually make any phone calls to our customers looking for payments or inquiring about their payment. Again, we will not require you to make a payment over the phone, nor will we require you to put together or purchase a prepaid, prepaid phone card or a prepaid Visa card to make that payment. Sometimes these scammers, they ask you to go and make a prepaid, buy a prepaid Visa card to purchase or, excuse me, to pay off your bill. If you do receive one of these scams, please make note of the number that is calling, maybe on your caller ID. Report that to PSC. In addition to reporting it to PSC, we're also asking that you report that to the Washington Attorney General's Office and also our Federal Trade Commission or the UTC. If you have any of these calls, I also encourage you, please call me. I'm welcome, I'm more than happy to walk through with you and talk with you about the, about the call that you received, business owners, residents. Again, do not feel like you have to pay over the phone. If it feels suspicious, it most likely is. With that, I'm going to leave you my business card. Any questions? Great. Yes?
Would you like to announce your number that you would like people to call you if something happens? You said you had it.
Yes, I'm, actually, I'll give you my cellphone, or excuse me, my email address. That's probably the easiest way to do that, and that email address is Lynn, L-Y-N-N dot Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y, at PSC dot com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Next on our list is Joe Coomer. Joe?
Before I forget, I'm requesting an auditorium or a stadium by like Thursday week with, I don't know what the, I need a shaker table too for this demonstration. I'll be some answers. What I, gentlemen, what I have invented is a solution to earthquakes. Let me example, I'll try to go through the physics of what's happening here, okay?
We can always see the motion, free motion here, okay? If you put a spring in like the program, it's got three-dimensional motion. What you don't see is that the opposite is true. The ball stays stationary and the support moves. This is critical. The ball is essentially disconnected from the earth. Okay?
It is not a cure for cancer, but it is a cure for earthquakes. If everybody, if all the bridges are suspended, houses suspended, important structures are suspended, when an earthquake hits, there will be no casualties and no damage. What happens in, in the earthquake land when after everybody believes this, you're going to have people lining up at contractors' office to elevate that, to suspend their houses. You'll have highway departments looking over all their bridges to see which one was critical because all suspension bridges are earthquake-proof. All bridges in earthquake land should be suspended. Had they suspended the Oakland Bay Bridge, it would not have failed, and there would have no more casualties. So we're talking about a huge breakthrough in earthquake design. And, you know, like I say, if it gets 100% implemented, earthquakes will no longer be a danger and a worry. So this is huge. Are there any questions on But like I say, I'd like to have like a stadium, an auditorium. I wonder if I can get a shaker table or something. It's pretty critical to demonstrate this, the physics of it, because I can't shake it hard enough, see the ball stationary. In other words, it's, the reverse is true. The ball stays stationary and the support shakes like crazy. And with this also... And what this also makes it feasible, if you suspend your house, you can make it out of masonry. There are no static, there's only static loads, not dynamic loads on it. It's huge. And I hope you believe me, because it is, I'm very serious about this, and it is, I expect to win the Nobel Peace Prize on physics with this idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, anyone else for citizen comment? Anyone else at this time? Going once, twice? Okay, next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, and if there is no objection, the consent agenda will be adopted. Oh yes, Councilman Campbell.
I'd like to pull item H for discussion.
Okay, item number 4H.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then we will, no other discussion, we, the rest of the consent agenda will be automatically adopted. So let's speak about item H, which is First Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement for HVAC Replacement at Oak Harbor Library in Hayes Hall.
And if you look down at 6B, they look to me like they're the same item.
Ordinance number 1783, Budget Amendment.
Budget Amendment for Air Conditioner.
So they are related. The first one is an interlocal agreement that we have with Skagit Valley College to replace the HVAC units. The second one is a budget amendment to authorize us to actually spend the money to do that, and that budget amendment requires a public hearing.
Okay, item H just tells them we're coming.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's good enough for me.
Okay, so then I think with that, then item H would be approved unless, at this time, okay? Good, let's move on to Section 5, Staff Mayor and Council Comments, and it looks like, I'm first on the agenda, so I do have a number of items actually. First off, it looks like we got rocked here tonight. The Whidby Island Rock, and I think each of us have at our station a rock that's been nicely painted. Mine says Leadership, but I also got one on my desk that said Mayor Bob Rocks. So I'm going to take that in a positive way, I think it's beautiful, and what an interesting idea, Whidby Island Rocks. I don't, how many of you have been involved? I had a couple granddaughters in town this last week, 10 and 7, soon to be seven-year-old, and they got really excited about the Whidby Island Rocks. We were riding bikes downtown, found about half a dozen rocks in about a 15-minute time period, and then the older granddaughter decided to hide, re-hide the rocks, and I want to say that within a half an hour, they were all found again by other people. So we've got people hiding them, people looking for them, re-hiding them, and it's really become a fun time. I know people, it's getting people out of the house and, you know, out in the fresh air, and so it's really been cool. So I'm glad to see you all got rocked along with me, Whidby Island Rocks.
Mayor Bob, are you going to hide, re-hide your mayor rocks, rock?
Well, I don't know about the Mayor Bob Rocks. I'm kind of, you know, I might hold on to that one. The second item I wanted to talk about is, did, and Mia brought it up during the invocation, not only one of, I think, four events really, but we just finished the music festival, and did we ever have a festival? I mean, we had, we had a lot of, I know, city involvement, we certainly had a lot of citizen involvement, we had people from off-island, people, you know, from elsewhere on the island, and we had a city full of people going back and forth between the two stages all weekend long. It was a wonderful time. My hat is off to all of the people, the music festival staff, or not staff, but those volunteers and that group that, I understand that there were many, I think 100 and some, maybe even more than that, volunteer. 250 volunteers, Councilman Almberg tells me, 250 volunteers for a festival. I did applaud our department heads this morning, because we had certainly city departments and staff involved, but to the community, to the citizens, thank you for a wonderful festival, that was very enjoyable. And then today was the first day of school, so I was at the high school at 7:20, and I know there were some other council people there, happy to welcome the new, or welcome the students back to the high school, and then I went to the Hillcrest Elementary School that starts a little bit later and got to welcome those kids for their first day. And I know Councilman, or councilperson Wassinger was there along with a few other people from our city that were involved. So congratulations, school district, successful first day back, and what a great way to start. This is more to the council than to the public, but you participated, I think most of you, in my evaluation. I asked you to evaluate me for the first months here on the job, I appreciate your doing so. You're certainly entitled to a copy of that. Deana will give you that, she'll be able to show you how I evaluated myself. I certainly learned some things. I need to work a little harder on my strategy and my visions and how I communicate some things, and I, it was a valuable process for me, so thank you for participating in that. I will work to gain a better eval next time around, so thank you. Also, Councilman Campbell has volunteered for a long time as a board member, as a director, excuse me, of the North Clean Air Agency. And I've asked Councilman Almberg, or Councilman Campbell, excuse me, to participate on another committee, and he said, hey, he said, why don't I look for volunteers for the directorship of the Northwest Clean Air Agency? They meet the second Thursday of every month at their agency office in Mount Vernon. The meetings are open to the public. The next meeting is September 8th, 2016. They run from 1:30 until 3 o'clock, and I'm looking for a volunteer.
I want to thank the head.
Yes, Councilman.
On the meeting of the 18, of the September 8th, after the regular meeting, there's going to be a meeting at a restaurant to say goodbye to the president, Board of Director, or to the present leader of the Clean Air Organization. He's going to retire in December, we're throwing him the going away party on the 8th. A new person has already been selected. Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a volunteer, and if we don't get one tonight, then I'll assign it to Dr. Merriman to figure out how we're going to fill that spot. Okay? We'll talk more on that, so thank you. Also have some new photo art here behind us. This is photography done by Mary Ann Barosny. I'm going to read her statement. "I have tried to approach the world with my eyes wide open during more than 25 years behind the camera, creating works mainly in southwest, northwest, Pacific coast, and New England. My greatest muse is my current home, Whidby Island. My interests lie in capturing natural light, crystallizing simple forms, and isolating textures and patterns. I always seek the essence of a scene or an object. My 10 years as an art jeweler informs the sometimes sculptural sense of my photographs, even if they do not fit into the schema of my work. Every now and then I find whimsical moments that I must photograph, such as hunted, such as hunted cows, miniature Grand Canyon snowmen, and ornamented VW Beetles. I am a member of Whidby Allied Artists and the Whidby Island Camera Club." So enjoy the photography from Mary Ann Barosny. And with that, I'll turn it over to the council. Anyone on council, Mayor Protim, anything you'd like to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the same line with the music festival, it was really a very enjoyable weekend here on the music festival. So I'd like to thank all the organizers and those volunteers who have put up that music festival. And on a Sunday about noon time, we enjoyed the music while having coffee at the Whidby Coffee. Very nice.
Good, thank you. Councilman Campbell?
I have nothing necessarily related to the city, but I would like to thank everyone in the city of Oak Harbor, both on the staff and out in the city, that over the past three to four weeks have been offering prayers for my wife. She had, and I, this sounds, to me, this sounds, doesn't sound very bad, she had a very bad gallbladder thing. That, when I had the same thing, I was, I played golf two days after surgery. When she did this, she was in surgery twice as long as normally required, and she was in recovery twice as long as normally required. Doctor said it was the worst case of gallbladder he had seen in the last year. So again, to all of you who knew about that and offered prayers, I thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Munz?
Thank you, Mayor. AWC, their next meeting is the 29th of September, and they're going to start on their priority list for legislators, so it's never too early to start thinking about that on the city's priorities for the next year instead of waiting till November and we're cramming. So that's one thing. I also have a picture I'd like to show here. In August, a few weeks ago, the Oak Harbor Youth Sailing Program, these are two high school Wildcat sailors that started out with the youth sailing program who won Lido's 14 Nationals. That is a big deal, and I'm also pleased that they're young female, yes. But anyway, it's just, it's, anytime you can say, congrats to our youth, because these are our leaders for tomorrow. So I wanted to just point that out, because it happened during the summer, so very pleased about that. And this Saturday, September 10th, is the 14th, 15th Annual Military Appreciation Picnic, and it's a way for the city to come together, to be one truly unique, together community, not us versus them, we're all one and we all work together to say thank. It's a free lunch. Orlando's is making the pork, and 7-Eleven is doing the hot dogs, and there's lots of other donations, but it's a casual ban. Come with your kids, there's programs, it's from noon to 4, so whenever you can show up, and it's just a great way to celebrate our community, and it's free. And I also want to say thank you to my support from the council members, so let my husband and I do a sailing trip up to Alaska and back, 10 and a half weeks, and thank you for your support and the patience from the citizens that I was able to do this, because it's once in a lifetime. So thank you very much for your indulgence to let me do this, so thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Well, thanks for coming back, Councilman Munz. Nice to have you back. Councilor Almberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the island transit is rolling along very quietly, but that doesn't mean that nothing is happening. And the executive director, Mr. Mike Nortier, former CO of the base, has that under control. He's doing a great job, and I think you'll see the island transit program integrate with the adjoining districts, so that eventually we should have a seamless transit system from district to district. And the next item, I also wanted to, again, thank all of those volunteers who helped put together and support the Oak Harbor Music Fest. And it's very difficult to name individuals, particularly when there are 200 people out there doing it, but I really want to add kudos to Larry Mason and Cynthia Mason, and I even say Larry Chapman. These people work all year long on this, they work on it for free, and they're out there trying to organize, the volunteers coordinate with the city, and they bring a lot of people in here. And my message to the LTAC Board, that's the Lodging Tax Board, is to please consider things like the Oak Harbor Music Fest proportionately to the benefit they bring to this community and bring to our economy in Oak Harbor. Thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Almberg. Councilor Wassinger?
Sure, yes. Thank you, Mayor. I feel like I've had a very full, grateful day today. It started off bright and early welcoming students back to the high school and then to Hillcrest Elementary, and a school district employee asked me how I felt about that and how I felt being there, I think for a write-up he was maybe going to do for the, for the school district, and I mentioned to him, you know, how happy I was to be there and how much I, as an elected official, support our students and their families, and how important it was for me to be there for them to see me and see my support. And I welcome all of those kids and their families to participate in our city and come to our city council meetings, and just know how much I value their contributions to our community and society as a whole, and so it was really special for me to be there. And then for lunch, I went to Navy League and got to listen to one of our female Navy service members who became an astronaut, and it was absolutely incredible. I mean, I was on the edge of my seat the entire presentation, it was fabulous, and as Beth said, I was inspired to see this female, this woman, who has done such amazing things with her career. So that was really special. And now I'm here tonight with you guys, I feel really grateful for all of that. But I also quickly wanted to thank the AWC. I got to attend a budget and finance conference in Leavenworth, and it was probably the most rewarding educational events that I've been to since I've been on city council. I learned so much, and I appreciate so much AWC putting on that conference, and for the city for allowing me to attend that, so thank you.
Thank you, and Councilman Servadius, I didn't forget you, I just thought you'd, like a little breather after that LTAC pressure, so turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we doing something with LTAC? A couple of things, obviously the obvious, I was greeting at Broadview, it's more fun, I did the high school last year. Those, the high schoolers, it's a challenge to get them to make eye contact, sometimes they're not exactly thrilled to be back at school, but at elementary schools, they're thrilled to be back, and the teachers are hugging them, and so that was a very good vibe. A couple of things, I too attended the conference with Councilmember Wassinger in Leavenworth. One of the things that stood out, and I know we're a little late in the process, but I want to mention it again, Mr. Merriman, that, or Dr. Merriman, that stood out to us, all of the speakers, as they spoke in the different municipalities, one of the driving messages was, the council kind of sets the priorities and the tone for the next year or two years, depending on how you do your budget, and then the department heads work with the mayor to prepare a budget to accomplish those priorities and goals, and then the mayor presents that budget. And I know in a workshop, we talked about setting a little more, I don't know if it's policy-driven budgeting or finances, but I'd like to kind of re-get back to that, I know we're fairly far along in this process, and as the council, we probably haven't looked at it that way, but I'd really like to work with the mayor and with you moving forward to set the priorities. Where does the council really want to see the city going, and what are our priorities? And that's, let's make sure we've got the dollars behind those priorities. And one of the things I'll continue to remind folks about, Dr. Merriman, Mayor, my peers, Mary Anderson reminded me of it tonight, she said, you know, if you really want to see a youth center or a community center, we had one slated, we chose to rescind that decision, some of you changed your minds, and we said, as long as there's money being set forth to, you know, make this happen in the future, that's the better way to go. And so if we're going to go that way, let's make sure, we haven't seen, I know we've got a budget coming forth here over the next couple of months, so please keep that in mind, trying to find that central place for people to gather that can also be used as an attractor to bring folks to Oak Harbor. And last but not least, and once again, I was grateful to be able to attend that conference, it was great information. Last but not least, I don't know if we mentioned this last month, since we only had two meetings, we approved a contract for Mr. Shelley. Did we give an official goodbye to Mr. Reine? If not, Jim, we very much appreciate you if you're watching, you've done a great service to the city as you enter retirement, and if we did already do this, then I apologize, but Mr. Reine's onward and upward, and so we appreciate all he's done. But Mr. Reine's onward and upward, and so we appreciate all he's done for us over the years. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would echo that also to Mr. Jim Reine. So I think we may see, see him back a little bit. We're still communicating with him, but, but we'll pass it along and try to utilize his skills still some. Okay. I think we've covered everybody here on, for council members' comments. And now we'll turn it to Dr. Merriman, City Administrator comments.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have a few items for you tonight, the first being the recruitment dashboard you have at your workstations there. This is a follow-up on the item I talked about a month or so ago, that the first of each month, I want to bring forward this. This is actually put out by the HR department. Emma, our HR Director, handed this off to me today. And I want to do is share this with council so you know what we have going on as far as recruitment. HR, when you walk downstairs, it's kind of a quiet corner down on the first floor, but it's anything but quiet in there. As you can tell from this list, they have a lot of different things going on, a lot of recruitments, and a lot of work being accomplished in a really good way. So what I'll do is each month, I'll provide this to you, and it kind of gives you a little bit of a snapshot on what positions we have open and what process we're doing to fill those positions. So if you have any questions on these, just feel free to give me a call or give Emma a call down in HR.
Question, Mayor? I'm assuming it wouldn't violate any Privacy Information Act or whatever. Is there any way to put the name of the person? I mean, obviously, the high-profile positions, we know who that person was, but sometimes someone might retire or move on, and we'd like to just reach out and say, "Congrats" or "Good luck." Is it possible to list the name of who is there?
We could do that, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and if there's any additional information that would be helpful for you or that you'd like to see, let me know on that as well. Okay. Moving on, other things that we're working on these days, we have the Whidby Island Marathon. Just to give you a quick update on our process on that, we issued a RFP for proposals for the race director probably six to eight weeks ago. We've moved along, along this quite a bit. We did receive six letters of intent from different firms. Five of those actually came back and responded with an application and went through the interview process. And we've gone through, rated them, added up the scores, and we're offering the race director position to Orswell Events. This is a firm that's worked with this for several years on the marathon already, and it will be a pretty easy step for them to go ahead and expand their scope of work that they've done in the past to cover this. Where we're at right now is I'm working with Jeff at Orswell to negotiate what the scope of services is, and we'll be bringing that forward to council as well as what the cost to do that is. But remember, this is under the new business model we're doing where it's more hands-off for city staff. Orswell will be taking on more of the load that was previously done by, by our staff. So we're moving along on that. We'll bring the professional service agreement and the scope of work. If not on September, December, excuse me, tying up on words tonight, on September 20th, it'll be the first meeting in October. Other projects we have going on, of course, you know about the budget. We're very deep into that process now with department heads bringing those budgets forward right now to finance. Patricia, our finance director, is compiling those. The mayor and I will be meeting with department heads to give a first run through those budget requests, and we'll start getting ready to get that preliminary budget put together for council to see. So we do have a number of items, things on capital projects. This could even include what Mr. Servadis referred to on the community room, different aspects like that, in addition to any staffing requests that are coming up. So those are a couple of different things. But as you'll start seeing shortly, we'll be scheduling a lot more meetings with council to go through those budget discussions so you see what we're proposing for the next two years. So speaking of meetings, I've got a few of them for you to notate. You'll probably receive emails on these as well, but just to make sure that you know and that our community knows that might be watching this meeting, following tonight, our next meeting is on Monday, September 12th. That is from 3:00 to 5:00. This is a special meeting to discuss low-impact development, or you hear it called LID. The next meeting scheduled is September 20th, and that's our regular city council meeting. This month, we actually go back to having two meetings a month now. So as you can tell, we're all back to ties again tonight, so that signifies our summer season's over, and we're going back to our regular schedule. On September 27th, we have a special meeting from 3:00 to 5:00. We needed a special meeting just to discuss the clean water facility, and that'll be from 3:00 to 5:00 as well. We do have an exit conference we're trying to schedule with the state auditors that may fall in this time, but we don't know enough yet to actually plan that for you, but it may be on that same day. And then finally, the fourth meeting for the month, we have on September 28th, and that is our regular workshop meeting from 3:00 to 5:00. That meeting will be primarily budget. Our finance director will be presenting some economic trends and different data for you. And then we also have a number of departments, primarily public safety, what we call our special revenue funds. This is, will be like the senior center, LTAC, those types of things, what goes into that budget, in addition to the Parks Department with Public Works. So those are scheduled for the September 28th meeting. It will be equally busy probably in October as we get to that point and continue those budget discussions as we move towards adoption. Those are the items that I personally had for tonight. The next one on my list is Joe Stoll to give you the clean water facility update.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. While Tim's getting the presentation up, I've switched things around yet again, trying to keep things lively and interesting. But I always, you know, it's too bad Ms. Hyzen isn't here because she always likes to see the time lapse, so hopefully she's watching for, from home. You can see the, the sump being poured down there closest to us, and that's a lot of intricate work, and the lowest point of the project. And as you, as you can see, they're pouring slabs, and here in a minute, you'll see some of the walls start going up. And there's a couple of them right there. So that, top of those walls are really close to what the, reasonably close to what the finished floor elevation's going to be for the, the yard inside and the, around the outside of the building. So it's just kind of fun to see how much rebar they put in the ground there, and they've been moving along swimmingly. That's a month's worth of time lapse, and they're doing just what they're supposed to be doing. So I kind of broke the recent activities into a couple of different categories, or a little bit different way of presenting this time. Design, Corolla Engineers has submitted 90% design on the non-process structures, and that's the admin and maintenance buildings. It was real easy to do that. Our architect was largely doing that, the entire facility, because it made sense for him to do it. So that was submitted to us here recently, and I've thumbed through it real quick, and it, it looks like we're well on our way. We did modify the odor control facilities a little bit. We played around with some different ideas and found a way to get them closer to the building. It's going to look a little bit different than what we presented before, but substantially it's the same. And we, we had a real nice and lively conversation down in Seattle looking at different options, and I think we came up with a real good one. I went looking for a rendering of it, but wasn't able to track one down in time to throw it in the, the presentation, but I'll try and grab one for another one, then another presentation. And then the revised outfall connection design, so we, because of the odor control changes that we made, we had to do some, a little bit redesign on the line that's going to connect the treatment plant out, effluent outfall, to the manhole that's down there by the trail that we constructed last summer. So that's, that was some work that they, and I can't even express all the other things that are going on in the background. I was trying to hit some of the highlights, so yeah, there's all kinds of other work going on in the background to keep things running smoothly. So as far as construction goes, you could see we've continued placing concrete, and this, these, these numbers here are, are fun to describe. I need to talk in Brett terms here. Concrete progress is at 134% of predicted, but labor is at 113. So what that means is we're putting down concrete faster than we thought, and we're also using less labor to do it. So it's, if you can imagine, every one of these, every one of these days that we can shave off of this turns into a week, turns into two weeks, and in the end helps us out. So kudos to Hoffman and their crew for, for pulling that off and, and keeping on track.
Can I interject a question, Mayor? Is that okay? If we're above 100%, does that mean we're over?
No, it means that we're 134, so 34% ahead of schedule.
Okay. Just different lingo.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's, it's, you explain it one way or the other, it's, it's tough, but basically what it's saying is we're ahead of schedule and using less labor.
Counselor Muntz?
So if we're ahead of schedule, then we've actually shaved off some of the deadline we thought. It's starting to come backwards, so we'll be done sooner.
That's our goal. You know, there's a lot of time between now and then, but it's, it's nice to highlight the good things when they happen.
Counselor Almberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stowell, when you're referring to we're ahead of schedule, 130, 113%, 114%, it's my understanding you're not referring to we are ahead of schedule from the finish line, but for that segment of the work that you're presenting tonight relative to our budget. In other words, the cost and the time, we are ahead for that segment.
You know, this is a really, it's a really fun topic because this is, this is all related back to the self-performed concrete work. So this is the portion of work that we negotiated with Hoffman. So at the beginning, they laid out a schedule of how much effort it would take, and we know how many yards, and we had a schedule for how, the checkerboard of pours that would need to be done. We used all three of those to gauge whether we're ahead of schedule or not. And according to, to, to our records, we're ahead of schedule for the self-performed work. That does translate into other savings later. I'm just, I, I was a fortune teller in my, in the past and wasn't very good at it, but I can, it leads towards having a, having it completed sooner.
We are moving in the right direction.
Yes.
And the accumulative effect of this segment could have a very positive effect on the tail end of the project, on the tail end schedule.
Yes.
We're banking time right now.
Yes.
There. I just, it, it was starting to sound like the project is way ahead of schedule, and from inception of this process to where we are today and projecting out for completion of the construction in 2018, that, that schedule has slid a little bit, but we're gaining on it. And I see Brett nodding his head because we've had this conversation going on the time here. Thanks.
Okay. All right, I'll move along. So we have some bid packages currently on the street. They're, the biggest of the bunch, it's Electrical Instrumentation and Controls, we call that EINC, and Process Mechanical, and both those have a bid opening on the 15th. So that's coming up here real shortly. And then remaining Process Structure Concrete, and that bid opening's on the 13th. And Hoffman is going to put in a bid on that, so we're going to be hosting the bid opening for that up here, so, since we're the impartial party in that. The other two will be down at Hoffman's office since they're managing that part of the, the bid. So funding, I, I just wanted to touch on this. It's, it's not a terribly big slide, but we, the 2016 State Revolving Fund loan is currently being modified by Ecology to add in, well, it's actually, we're combining, I believe what they're doing is combining the 2015 and 2016 loans into one, and I'm not sure exactly how they're doing that, but it's kind of, it's an interesting thing, two different loans, two different loan rates, and they're trying to put it in one agreement. So we'll see how that comes about, but we're, we'll likely be coming back to you in the near future with more information on that, possibly an approval from you on it. And we're looking forward to the next application. There's still some remaining funding that we can apply for, and we're going to look to do that. So upcoming activities, something to watch for. I've mentioned it a couple of times. You'll see this poster or something very close to it down there by the project site. We're looking to close City Beach Street from Bay Shore down to the pathway. Pathway will remain open, so the waterfront trail will remain open. And fencing will go up as soon as the 12th, so after the, the picnic, and will be up for, through October 29th. Hopefully, not quite that long, but that's, that's the goal. And the work will be to install the, the connection pipe that I was talking about earlier. Real interesting work. We worked really hard with our contractor to come up with an agreeable price, and that's, it's an important part of the, the project moving forward. On that note, the parking lot to the south of the existing treatment plant will not be accessible, so we're doing some restriping in our parking lot that we have there by the project site behind Wells Fargo. So if people want to use that, they're more than welcome to. Trying to make it as convenient as we can. Some of the stalls were painted the wrong direction, so it always was entertaining to watch people park, but we're getting that turned around. So another real interesting one, and I, I got to highlight this because Hoffman's doing, doing a really good thing here, going out on the 20th and inviting contractors to learn more about working on our project, because all this work is put out in smaller bid packages like I was showing earlier. So, I mean, I'll read just a couple of them. I'm not going to read the whole list, but it's, you know, masonry, wood framing, drywall, exterior paving, curb and gutter. All those things get subbed out, and there's the potential for local contractors to do that work should they choose to throw their name in the hat and bid on the project. So they, there's, this is a unique project. There's unique requirements that go along with it, not only working with the city and with Hoffman, but with DOE. So we wanted to do our part and educate the local contractors so that they could be as success, successful at bidding on this as possible. And so that's on September 20th, 1 to 3, and it's at the project office. So for those that aren't fully familiar with where that project office is, I guess I, I had somebody the other day that didn't know where, but right there where Bay Shore and City Beach Street come together, there's a little parking lot that's fenced off right near where the, the deep pit is. If you walk along the fence line to the back of the old Whidby Island Bank Building, you'll see signs back there to go upstairs, and we've got quite the workforce down there right now. So upcoming major council updates and decision points, we're here tonight, and I'll be back in a little bit to talk about GMP 8. September 27th is council workshop, and that's from 3:00 to 5:00 to talk about those bid results amongst a whole bunch of other things. That'll be very interesting, I hope. As many of you can make it as possible. We're going to be talking about a lot of really good information. October 4th, we'll be returning to council to consider a ward of GMP 9, which are those bids that were opening on the 13th and 15th, in addition to some, a few other little things. And then November 16th, we'll review GMP 10, which is non-process and odor control, the, the admin and maintenance buildings and, and odor control facility. And that would take us to December 20th award. You throw that on a, a calendar here, and so we're here tonight. That's GMP 8, 9 on the 4th, and 10 on December 20th. And what that gets us to is a real close, we're going to be as close as ever to what the cost of this project is going to be by 20th of December, and it'll all largely, with the exception of the, the park improvements, will have been bid by that point. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Muntz?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stowell, you mentioned improvements to the park. I know people were trying to work after that. One, when their charrette got finished, made recommendations, and a lot of it takes a lot of work trying to work up grants, and you already had lists of possible places to apply. Is there any applications in yet, or, you know, we're trying to, as, as this gets done, we start working on this? And I didn't know if any tidbit of progress had been made or not, but I know you were trying to coordinate, and it, it looked really good. I didn't know, since I've been gone, we've been successful on any ideas or avenues or where we're headed.
We are making some progress. That's going to be part of the budget discussions as we move forward. We do have a series of meetings internally to kind of scope out what that next, what that phase of work would be. It's, it's very similar to what was in the Windjammer Plan, the- It's, it's very similar to what was in the Windjammer Plan, the Phase 1 and 1B. We've kind of, you know, made a few little tweaks to it to make it more efficient, and we're already, I've already made at least one call to the, to WashDOT about a transportation alternatives grant, and it wasn't all that favorable, just because they liked it to be completely split out, but it might have an opportunity later. We also, with the Windjammer Park Plan, or Windjammer Park Integration Plan, that was actually accepted by the, the state as a, a plan that we can use as the basis for getting grants. So we're making some baby steps on it, but we'll definitely keep rolling along, see as much, get as much done as we can.
Thank you, that's very encouraging. Thank you.
Yes, Council member.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stowell, would you restate what you said about December the 20th, about the bids and the costs of, for this project? Was that 90% or is that going to be really close to 100% as we know the project right now?
So the goal of that one is going to be to bid everything adjacent to the treatment plant. So at that point, we'll have, everything that's integral to operating the treatment plant should have been bid or will be bid by that date. There are items that, I'm not 100% sure if they're included or not, would be like the landscaping immediately outside, but that is a relatively small amount compared to the rest of the project.
So I have a question then for Dr. Merriman. Approximately that time, then shouldn't we be able to pin down our rates? If we have that information, our sewer rates?
Yeah, shortly thereafter, when we get those final numbers like that, we can plug those back into the model and then do another projection on what rates would be.
And do you have any idea, I know I'm kind of catching you by surprise right now, but let's say December 20th we get this, you think by Christmas you'll have the? I know you won't, I don't mean that.
I would love to put that in your stocking, but I don't think it's going to be that good.
Can you give approximate timeline, or can you shoot from the hip on that one?
I would say probably if we get those numbers and it looks pretty solid, probably, you know, towards the end of January or something. We also have rate studies that we'll be performing on the other utilities as well, so we have a little bit of a time competition there, so it might take us a few weeks to get that crunched out.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, any other questions, council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Stowell.
Thanks.
See you later on. Okay, any, any other comments, Dr. Merriman? Okay, we're moving on to public hearings and meetings. To speak at a scheduled public hearing or meeting, please sign in. I will give you an opportunity. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I'll give you an opportunity, even if you aren't signed in, if you want to speak directly to a, one of our, one of our ordinances. So we're going to go to 6A, ordinance number 1782, amendments to Ocarbor Municipal Code 2120-080, effective approval, and Ocarbor Municipal Code 2140-020, timeline for submission of final plat and extensions for completion of improvements. It looks like we have our senior planner, Kat Kamak.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Kat Kamak, senior planner, here to present some code amendments to extend the time for filing of preliminary plats and vesting periods for final plats. And I'll go through a quick presentation, but there were some amendments done through the state legislature over a period of three terms, and so finally they're done making amendments, so we can kind of catch up and, and do our code amendments. So, quick presentation. So RCW 5817140 sets the time period for filing final plats after a preliminary plat is approved. That time limit is set normally at five years. Now, the legislature came, made some changes back in 2010 because we had a down economy, and there were not too many construction projects moving forward, which kind of led to the possibility that some of these approved plans may expire, and if it were ever to come back online, they would have to go through the approval process again, thus delaying the time. So the legislature made some extensions in 2010, the economy didn't still come back up, they came back in 2012, did some more changes, and they did some more changes in 2013, and I'll go over some of those changes here in a little bit. But the filing periods were extended basically from five to seven to nine and eventually to 10 years, and they applied differently to different plats based on the time that they were approved and whether they were in a shoreline jurisdiction, and I'll go over some of those details as well. They also extended the time period for divesting of final plats, the land uses associated with final plats. So in order to kind of understand how these changes impact our code amendments, we probably should go over just the procedure or the process on how Ocarbor goes through plat approval process, and I can kind of indicate to you where those time periods will apply in our process and how they impact our code, or where our code should be amended. So the plating process starts with the preliminary plat application. Clicker's not working? Oh, maybe, yeah, okay. So once we determine it to be complete, we send it for internal review, and then we go through a public hearing process with the planning commission and the city council before they approve. So once the preliminary plat is approved, there are two potential ways that they can get to final plat, and I'll go over both the ways because the time period affects them a little differently. So the, one of the, one, the first way is to develop a civil plan for the, for the subdivision, go through the construction, do a final inspection, and once everything is complete, they file for a final plat application. So the time periods that we're talking about extension is, is between that preliminary plat approval and that final plat application. Once the final plat application is in, it comes here for, to city council for final plat approval. The other way to do it is to do civil plans and then to post a bond, so they don't go into construction, they post a bond for the construction based on the civil plans, and then they do a final plat application. So the time period there will apply to the final plat application. And then they come back, they do the final plat approval, and then they do the construction and the final inspection. The vesting periods that the changes were made applies after the final plan approval, and so in this case, at the bottom process, it'll apply after the final plat approval, which covers the construction inspection, and then in the top, the construction is always, already done, so the final plat, after the final plat is approved, the uses are vested for a certain period of time, and that's what that extension deals with. So the yellow lines deal with the preliminary plat and how long they're valid for, and the blue kind of bracket kind of talks about vesting periods. So that's kind of where the modifications at the state level occurred. So how does it impact our code? So our code is written a little differently, it doesn't talk about preliminary plat extension, but it does talk about construction periods. But before I get in there into the code amendments, let me first kind of go through the extension periods that they had. So for preliminary plat, plats approved before 2008 and not within a shoreline jurisdiction, the validity is 10 years, so that's the longest time. And for preliminary plats that have been approved before 2015, and those are within the shoreline jurisdiction, that time period is seven years. And for preliminary plats approved after January 2015, it just goes back to the original five years. So they gave a, a time period by, within which you can, you can have that extension. The final plats, of course, follow the same kind of 10, seven years, but it talks about vesting of uses, so that's the, after the final plat is approved, how long it's vested. So the two code sections, and they are in your packet and in your ordinance, so the way it impacts our code is we have effective approval and we have in our code time periods for the construction. So that's basically how long the preliminary plat is valid. So we've amended the code to say how long you can have before you're complete with the construction after the preliminary plat is done. That's where the 10 and the, and the nine, and the seven years come in. And then for the final plat, it's the same thing. We have in our language, we've written when you can file final plat, and it applies back to how long the preliminary plat is valid. So you can file a final plat within that preliminary plat validity period, so we've kind of written the code to reflect that change. And then what we did for the vesting is we just referred it to the RCWs. Now, that period can change if the, if the state determines, we don't have to do more modifications, we just refer to the RCWs, and then whatever change they make, we're able to, to take on from there. So those are the amendments in front of council today. The planning commission held a public hearing on this, and they did receive some public comment. We had a developer come in and make a comment, they want, you know, it's good to have, one thing I'll say, the state law, you know, overrules our city code in the sense, even though we don't have it specifically in there, these extensions do apply to local plats, but it's always good to have that in your code, then the developers are, don't deal with inconsistencies or don't have any doubts, so we're just reflecting the state code. So anyway, we had some public comment, and the planning commission has recommended to the city council that it be approved, so we recommend that the city council conduct a public hearing and also approve the code amendments as proposed. After the public hearing, I'll be happy to answer any questions, or if you have any questions now, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, seeing none, we'll have a, we'll open it up to public hearing on ordinance number 1782 and the proposed amendments. Anybody wish to speak directly to that? Anybody from the audience? Going once, twice? Okay, we'll bring it here to city council. Does council have specific action or question? Yes, council, council person.
Thank you. So I'm trying to catch up on when something's expired and all. If they're within a certain time period and they fit a certain category, they get 10, seven, or five years. Could that be noted somewhere? Do you give it back to them to be sure that they know exactly what category they fall into, so that when we can see it, we can say, well, they were under, so they get 10 years or whatever from the date? Because for a while, it's, you're going to have three separate dates when this comes through, if I'm understanding this correctly, and then there's a time where everybody is back to the five years.
Yeah. So the, the code amendments will apply to some of the preliminary plats already approved by the.
Right.
Ocarbor. So we have about a couple, maybe two or three plats that fall under, under this category that would, would be eligible for this extension, and they know that already. So from here on, any subdivisions come in, it's five years.
Okay. But if we haven't done the final, final plat and we're looking at the date, it would kind of be nice if there was just a little notation that they fit in extension or something. I mean, there's only three of them, as you said, three or four of them, just so that we know.
Which ones?
Which ones, just because sometimes I'll get time, and I go, wait a minute, why isn't this? That could be a question I could ask you during, but it just would be interesting on who fell into that category.
Yeah, we don't have that information here, but if you're interested, we can front, yes.
When we see the final.
Final plat, yes.
I'm just talking about the final, final, and we're looking at it, to know the history, if that was just a little.
Absolutely, when it comes in, we can tell you when it's approved and what category they fit in and why they're still eligible for an extension.
Okay, thank you very much, because I have seen projects come through and go, oh, well, they just missed their five-year.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
We can add that information.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Yes, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. You covered this thoroughly at our last workshop, too, and I think it's a good presentation. Good job, I'm going to support it.
Okay, anyone else? Motion, Councilor Servadius?
Thank you, Mayor, just looking around to make sure no one else had any comments. I move to adopt ordinance number 1782 approving the code amendments of OHMC, man, this is a lot to read, I should have, OHMC 21.20.080 and 21.40.020 to extend the time period for construction after preliminary plat approval, the time period for filing final plats, and the vesting periods for final plats to be in conformance with RCW 58.17.140 and RCW 58.17.170.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve and a second, ordinance number 1782. I'm not going to read the entire motion again. We don't have it presented, or we don't have it printed to look at, right? Okay. Any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Kat. We'll move on to item number 6B, ordinance number 1783, budget amendment for Skagit Valley College Library HVAC upgrade and replacement. Well, Patricia Soul, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
And city council. Before you, it's ordinance 1783 to amend the biennial 2015-16 budget for the Skagit Valley College Library HVAC upgrade. An interlocal agreement was approved by council on March 15th of 2016 for $170,000. An amendment for 46603 was just approved tonight via the consent agenda. That brings the total agreed-upon contribution by the city to $216,603. This will be funded by, if approved, this budget amendment, moving $100,000 out of REIT I fund 311 into the general fund, and a budget amendment will also move the remainder $116,603 into the capital outlay for the library to fund this project, using the ending fund balance in the general fund.
I think we would open it up to the public at this time. If anybody has any questions, input, going once, twice, okay, seeing none, back to the council. Any questions, any input? Councilor Servadius?
Thank you, I probably should have asked this question on consent agenda 4H with the interlocal, but in general, I understand we're providing a service here, and it's a cooperative agreement. Is there an income side of this equation that we receive from either Skagit Valley College or the library?
We don't receive a rental payment from Snow Isle Regional Library to do that. There is a cost-sharing program where costs of security and maintenance and utility, those things flow through between Skagit Valley College and Snow Isle, are kind of a conduit for that. But there is no revenue stream from that source that would pay for this type of improvement like that.
So we cost share, but there's no revenue?
Correct. It's a reimbursement basis on just the security officer that goes around and on janitorial tight maintenance, but nothing for a capital project of this size.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Not too long ago, we had discussions, or there were discussions about the library moving, and they were looking for a new place. Does, if, if, is there an impact here if they move? Do, I mean, or is the college just going to take over that, that, that space and will still have to be putting the air conditioner in?
Yeah, if I can. The project itself, it's been talked about for some time, and we've had air quality issues there for a number of years.
Okay.
It's one of those where there is not a plan definitively on the books right now for a change in ownership of that building. It's getting to such a point that even if there were a change, where the library was located and Skagit Valley College taking over that building, we most likely would have to do this project before we turn that over.
Oh, okay.
So it's best just to get it done now while we know the cost and we have the funding and ability to do that.
Thank you.
Councilor Ombur.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for Dr. Merriman also. Details weren't provided in our packet regarding the comparison between, let's say, the tonnage BTU ratings, things like that for the existing system, and typically you don't go into that depth, but I'm really curious, are we upgrading the capacity of this system? I heard you say something about we've had air quality, and when I read the, the lease and the, or the contract that's in here, we're supposed to cost share for maintenance and replacement. Can you tell me if the replacement is an upgrade in capacity, or is it equal to what we have there on the roof or wherever the, the units are located?
Sure. As far as the specific details on capacity, we would have to get that information from Skagit Valley College and get that for you. The only piece that I know that it is equal to or better than the system we have, because the whole purpose was to upgrade the performance and the air quality measures that are in it, so there is an enhancement to that. I don't know down to what power supply and the BTU levels. to that. I don't know down to what power supply and the BTU levels of that.
Well, the reason I ask that is we are, if it's approved, adding forty-six thousand dollars to this. And our obligation is to maintain or replace by the agreement what was approved in the agreement, not to pay for an upgrade.
I'm not quite getting your question, sir.
The, let's say that, let's say you have fifty tons of HVAC coolant capacity, stuff like that.
Okay.
And, and that's when we had the contract in ninety, ninety-six, it was back twenty-six years, whatever it goes back to, even before that, nineteen ninety. So if fifty tons was designed for that building and we cost shared at that time, which we did, for fifty tons, the example is, this replacement, are they jacking it up to seventy-five tons and we're paying a premium for it? That information wasn't provided to us. You know, I see we have an obligation to stay within our agreement, but it should be apples, for apples within that agreement. And I don't think we should be paying for a premium upgrade to upgrade the system.
Okay.
Beyond what we agreed to.
Yeah. I seriously doubt in our original agreement, we'll find a measurement capacity like that to follow. Though your point is a good one there, where we do need to find out possibly, for your information, what kind of an upgrade is that from that usage type standpoint? The main part of our cost driver on that is based on percentage of square footage of the building. So any capital improvements and things like that, the one I referred to before on security and janitorial, we pay roughly forty-three percent of the total.
Right.
So anything on that building in total, we're using that same methodology to determine the cost allocation on that. But there hasn't been something that measures it out by the tonnage you talked about. I think the assumption there is that is an equal amount across the entire building. It's not like one site will be less or more than the other. So we're not having an unfair allocation placed on us.
So you do not believe it's an unfair allocation on an upgrade system that we're voting on tonight?
No, I think we're sharing in this in proportion to what our agreement percentage is with Skagit Valley College.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Merriman.
Yes, in fact, for what it's worth, the way it was explained to me is that after twenty-six years, this is, this is a unit that needs to be, several units that need to be replaced throughout the college and the library. And our percentage is somewhere in the forty percent. I don't believe it's any kind of an upgrade, but it will, it will bring it up to today's standards and expectations for HVAC.
Sure. And Mr. Almburg, just for your information, we can get that information and see if there's an upgrade in that process that you described.
It would be worthwhile for me to, to understand that.
Sure.
You know, what it, not criticizing what the staff is doing, but it tells me that, that that rock was turned over, not the rock on the mayor's desk, but that, you know, that that item was looked at and that it hasn't been upgraded beyond what is reasonable for our contract and what our obligations are.
Okay.
So how does, that's the way I understand it anyway. How, yes, councillor.
I was gonna say, do all these questions tell us to table this?
I can't.
Do all of these questions that we're asking tell us to table this one?
No, not at all. This one is just a funding source to do for the project. We've already agreed on the interlocal agreement and any information that we were to find to provide to Mr. Almburg won't have any bearing on the decision itself. It's just more the technical aspects of what that project is, but it won't affect us needing the transfer REIT money to pay for this. So we've already approved the interlocal agreement. We have that agreement going forward to the college.
Right.
This is just for the funding side of that.
Well, if, if there's an argument about the funding, once you get all these technical answers.
There won't, there.
So, so what we're gonna do is go ask questions and no matter what the answer is, we're still gonna continue on the way we do.
If you want to do something different, that is up to council to do.
I understand that.
Yeah, but I don't think any information we would provide would change staff's recommendation to council about how to fund this.
No, I'm not worried about how to fund it. I'm worried about the amount of funding. I mean, if these questions, these questions are technical. And if the technical questions say, the money is not right, are you gonna bring this back to us, tell us we gotta redo this again? Or?
It's council's decision what you would like to do. The specific details on the type of system going in will not change our existing agreement that says forty-three percent.
Yeah.
So regardless, you can either say, we're not doing it, or we're doing it, but there's no change in the funding and what we would need to go ahead and provide that.
Okay. I think we've got another spokesman.
Well, and I do have an email that states that this is a bare bones HVAC replacement with extended exhaust system. Is that the part that changed, the exhaust system?
Yes, because of air quality concerns. So they're replacing what we've had just with a current model, which is going to be an upgrade because it's going to be more energy efficient, different controls, those kinds of things. But we are not getting more than we need. We are not getting larger units than what we currently have.
Thank you. And I would say thank you, too. You know, there is a certain amount of trust that has to go in here. When I look at Dr. Merriman and he said, you know, for the, not the upgrade, in terms of they're getting more benefit, we are in compliance with the agreement that we have with them to bring it up to current standards, because, you know, I agree that twenty-five years on that system is the, more than the useful life of most of them. So, but I do want to know the technical side of it, if you see under that rock that there was a, an unfavorable attachment of benefit in there, I would like to hear it. And I'm kind of with Mr. Campbell on this. We'd like to hear back from it if you find under that rock that, whoops, there is something that kind of got slipped in there that was not recognized originally.
Rich Ty House has been through
Okay.
all of this many, many times with Dave Hayes from Skagit Valley College. So Rich is very cost conscious and would not approve something or bring something forward that was unreasonable.
But I think they're legitimate questions from the council, at least.
Sure.
I feel that way.
Okay. Sure. Councillor Campbell?
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance seventeen eighty-three.
Second.
So we have a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen eighty-three by councillor Campbell and a second by councillor Servadius. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. We're off through seven and on to eight contracts and agreements. And it looks like we have our city engineer, Joe Stoll, coming for item eight A, clean water facility, professional services agreement with ERCI amendment number seven.
Mayor, council members, thanks for having me back. I always say that because I always wonder if you're gonna just ask me to leave after I've been up here for so long. But this particular agenda item is regarding ERCI's contract amendment number seven. If you remember, cultural resource monitoring is required by the Clean Water State Revolving Fund's section one oh six requirements. So this is something that we're required to do, monitoring in accordance with the memorandum of agreement, which council approved on April twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Just a quick, you know, refresher, that's where we coordinated with six tribes, the state, two state agencies and the federal government to develop a memorandum of agreement on, on how we would address cultural resources on the project. And we've already tested it out once when we found human remains and it worked successfully. And we were able to continue working in another area. And I think it was just a matter of a week or two weeks and we were back working in that area. It wasn't terribly long. So just a summary of previous council actions on, with, in regards to archaeology, these are all amendments. I should have labeled them as much, but May seventh, two thousand and thirteen, we had our initial contract with ERCI. And that was for the initial treatment plant siting. That's at a point when we didn't know which property along Pioneer Way or along the park area there, the Windgemmer vicinity, that we would put the treatment plant. And then in December, we authorized a contract to do what was supposed to be about two thousand feet of trenching. And I think we ended up much short of that because we found what we needed to. But point being is that was to further identify that we didn't have any risks, or at least identify what risks we did have with siting the treatment plant there. We had some permitting support that led us through the memorandum of agreement. And there was monitoring contract for the outfall that we constructed. And then there was site package A monitoring. And when we spoke earlier, I thought that, that the last amendment covered all the way through just site prep A, that actually we had a subsequent amendment that got us through the deep excavation, which, and the micro piles and stone columns. And that one was awarded on October twentieth. So the proposed scope of work going forward is, well, I suppose I should stop for just a second right here because there's an important point I want to bring up is that you'll notice that we don't have, the amendment we have with Crowell isn't regarding really construction tonight. It's, and the one that we have with Hoffman is, it's, we don't have Crowell's contract on here for engineering support and we don't have KBAs on here, because we did those already. I'm trying to find a better way of explaining that, sorry for tying my words up. But basically, what I, what I'm trying to say is that ERCI has done a very good job of managing their manpower and their budget to do well for the city. They worked with Hoffman Construction and coordinating their field time so that if they weren't gonna be doing excavating, we didn't have an archaeologist drive over from Mount Vernon to monitor the work. And in one or two cases, we actually, when something cropped up, we asked Gideon, our staff archaeologist, to go down and do some of that work instead of having somebody drive over from, from Mount Vernon. So it took us, with that, the budget stretched a little bit further than we initially thought. So we're coming forward today because we're getting ready to do some more work that is what we expect to be a bit more culturally sensitive than what we've dealt with to date. And that's the installation of the outfall connection and demolition of the existing treatment, the existing RBC plant. So kind of to, the proposed work is to provide that monitoring, estimating two monitors. They have, there's reporting, weekly reporting that goes along with this, plus a summary report at the end that's required by the MOA. And there's a contingency in the contract for, should we encounter cultural resources that we've got a fund set aside to cover that. And we will only release that should we come across that instance. And that's the, that's the summary of the slides there. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public at this time to, for comment. Anybody? Okay, seeing, going once, going twice, seeing none, back to the council. Questions, input? How would you like to proceed? Councillor Almburg?
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Stowell, we did have a conversation today in, regarding the estimate and how much of the work has been completed compared to what the estimates were. These are estimates for T and M.
Correct.
They're, they're estimates only.
Not to exceed.
They're not contract bids. And at this date, then you are telling me that we did extra work for six hundred, and paid six hundred and four thousand, or obligated to pay six hundred and four thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Since two thousand and thirteen, yes.
Since two thousand and thirteen, when we started this. The, and the, and I'm just saying this for clarification in, from our conversation, the, the estimates are just that. They're estimates T and M not to exceed. And, and my question was, how come we have an estimate, but we keep hitting it right on the nose for each, each amendment, each change order or extension to the contract? That's pretty good estimating when you can hit it right on the nose to the dime or to the dollar. Would you please elaborate on what ERCI did in addition to the amendment number six that got us to six hundred and four, where we were able to use those funds based on their efficiencies?
You know.
More specific what they did, because in our conversation, you'd mentioned that we ended up doing the deep excavation without coming back here, yet we did have.
Well, and that's what I thought when we talked on the phone. I wanted to make that correction when I was here.
Yeah. Clarify that for me, if you would, please.
You know, there were two parts to that question. One was, is it, it feels like we're using up all the budget each time. And I'd like to go back to Pioneer Way and Pitt Road. And we came in, so we're right now, we're over a hundred thousand, short of what the estimate was. There's still a little bit of work to do, but we're not gonna use up that amount. There's no way possible. The other project that we had was the forty-two inch storm drain outfall. We came in thirty to forty thousand, short of estimate on that one as well. So it's not a pattern of coming in at the estimate. And what you'll see is that as we've worked on these construction projects more and more together, we've been able to have that communication with the contractor more fluently. As you can imagine, it's difficult for, sometimes for contractors that aren't used to dealing with archaeology to gauge how much time it's gonna take them to do their job. And with that, we've developed a way of communicating with the contractors. It's made that a lot easier, I think. And therefore, the estimates get a little bit better as to how much effort it's gonna take.
So you're saying that we have some work, have had some work and we have some work regarding ERCI on Pioneer Waste. We have those deposits that have to be dealt with.
Correct.
So the funds required to do that came from previous amendments to this contract?
No.
No?
No. That was previous projects altogether. What I was trying to demonstrate is there's not a pattern of, of meeting or exceeding their budget. So the second part of it on this particular project, the six hundred and four thousand, I'd have to, honestly, I'd have to go back and spend some time going through the books. But what I can tell you from my gut feeling and working on this project as long as I have, and working with Kelly as long as I have, is that they've assigned the appropriate amount of staff and effort to supporting this project as we have asked them to.
Well, as, and I'm not gonna belabor this, so we move this along. As we look at all of these amendments, they are GMPs and contracts not to exceed, their estimates not to exceed, there's always allowances in there. There's allowances in this one. It's pointed out in the breakdown that you gave us. And are we not spending the allowances? Or are we spending the estimate plus the allowances to keep coming out with balancing the budget? If we're under, where is that money that we're under based on those efficiencies? And if we're spending that money because of the efficiencies, what are we spending it on?
Would you terribly mind if I spent some time looking into that some more and put together a spreadsheet to help explain it?
I don't know about the rest of the council members, but that would be helpful for me. I always feel like when I'm gonna vote for a two hundred thousand dollar, a ten million dollar, or whatever dollar, that I should have a pretty good understanding about what the accounting is. The, you guys do the forecast every month on the wastewater treatment plant. You know, that's how you came up with the hundred and fifteen percent, a hundred and thirty-four percent and stuff like that. And, and I don't think that in some of these presentations, that we're getting that level. And I don't think that in some of these presentations that we're getting that level of reporting that says, we're saving money in this case, and we're going to bankroll this. We're going to probably spend it, but we are not going to go over these GMPs, or we're not going to go over these estimates without coming back to the council.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I've learned not to go over on a budget without coming back to council. I wouldn't do that. And we do spend a lot of effort trying to track where our projects are at. And other than sitting down with you and going through everything, I don't know how better to explain it.
Okay, so let me just, one more thing here then. So this should be the last amendment for ERCI, as much as we can tell on this, the scope of this project right now?
Unless we ask her to do something else, which might include helping us with the siting of Splash Park, or-
I'm just talking about what we know about the wastewater treatment plant right now. This should be the tail end of their contracts.
I'm not confident in saying it'll be the last one standing here, because I know that there's other work that needs to be done that we'll need her support on.
For, for the park?
Yeah, the park integration plan, for starters. And we haven't established the, exactly how the site will look outside the walls of the treatment plant. That's part of the park integration plan work that we'll be doing. So I'm real hesitant to say that. And quite frankly, in her contract, it says that it allows for 14 days of work should we encounter human remains. And we're going to be working in probably the highest cultural resource area that we have to date.
And they cover that in their budget on the contingency breakdown.
Mm-hmm.
And then in addition to that, we have the 14 days. I mean, the caveats are in there. What I'm looking for is where is the predicted tail end for this relative to the wastewater treatment plant not including the park issues?
I think it's going to be when we issue the contract to do the site work around the outside of the treatment plant, and we know what that's going to look like.
Okay. Not trying to beat up on you, Joe. I just let it go. Thanks, Mayor.
Other input? Yes, Councilman Servatius?
Just a quick question. Will you back one slide, please, Joe? The contingency, where was that in here? I'm looking at the Excel spreadsheet.
It's at the tail end of the spreadsheet.
Oh, I see it now. Ongoing administrative work, four hours, 14 minutes. So four weeks for the outfall connector, four weeks for the decommissioning. We can't, nothing against you, Kelly, but we can't go hire a full-time archaeologist for 150 grand that can get all this work done. But I'm with Mr. Almberg, it's, I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish, because I know the sensitive finds that have occurred down there and where they were. And with what we're gearing up to do, once again, I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish to make sure we're doing the right things, but-
You know, we do have a staff archaeologist, Gideon Kaufman, who's doing a wonderful job for us, and he's helping out a lot with on-call stuff. And actually, we're talking about some other improvements to historic properties and things like that around the area. Hope to come to you at a workshop before too long with that. With a project of this size, one person can't do it all for several reasons. One, they're digging in two places at the same time, so you need to have somebody monitoring each location. Further, you start, say you find human remains, then you pull in different, or particular historic items or cultural artifacts, and you need to pull in other resources to help identify if they're human remains or saw-cut bones from a butcher shop. And every, even there's even geologists that specialize in archaeology in trying to determine the striations of the earth to determine the story behind, how the deposits were made. So I don't think it's fair to ask one person on a project of this magnitude to take on that responsibility, and heaven forbid they're sick one day, and then you've got a large construction crew that can't work. Kelly's been very successful at having somebody there when we need them.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Councilman Munz.
Thank you. Mr. Stowell, and I believe Kelly was kind enough, and it's been a long time, but she sort of did a show and tell kind of thing. And I think it would be nice to refresh the council on some of the stuff, if it can be shown in pictures, or even example brought to chamber, and then it can be on TV and everybody can see about what is really happening. I mean, we're paying for things and we see lists, but we're not seeing and feeling, and really, we're just paying, and it's just kind of listed in technical terms. But to have something shown, whether it be slides, that this is what happened there, and I'm sure they have a ton of pictures of, they've got to document everything, but it kind of puts back into real-life perspective. We're not just paying bills and we're looking at, you know, mileage for and travel. I mean, we're putting in perspective what is really being found here. We don't really know, because we're not down there when they find it. We don't see it, we don't hear about it. It's carted off and hidden, and we're kind of left in the dark. So I guess in plain English, it would be nice to have a show and tell and say, this is some of the things that have been found, and this is how the city and our culture is being evolved, because we are discovering and finding these things. It's just, I know it's maybe too much, but every now and then, if you have a reminder, it's a little easier when you have these kind of things, so.
You're stealing some of my thunder from, because later, we're talking about it in-
You didn't give me the limo!
Well, in the interpretive center, which is coming up in the next agenda item, we intend to have a section set aside in the interpretive center for Oak Harbor's history, whether that's American Indian, or Dutch, or, you know, what's the story of our community? And then combined with that, we've been asked to incorporate the post office oak tree into the interpretive center. So, but that's one part of it. And Gideon also has helped working with the library, and I can't remember, is it this month or next month that's archaeology month?
October.
October. That's appropriate. So October is archaeology month, and last year, Gideon worked with the library and had a display over there of items. And when we're a little bit closer to the finish line on some of this work, I'd love to bring some things in, and maybe at a workshop setting, and share them.
Just, even just a tidbit, once in a while, not when the building's finished, not when the library's doing an exhibit, bring us into it. Let us share and not wait till it's done and say, ta-da, here it is. I mean, it just helps if you bring everyone along the way as you go, instead of saying, ta-da, here it is, finished, and we're like, huh? So I'm just, just a request, please, Mayor, please. Thank you.
Any other input or questions? Okay, could you flip to the recommended action on this? So this is good dialogue. We're having, we're having good conversation, and I can tell you, I've had some conversation with some of the council. You know, it's a big project. We all know that. And for this, we're going to be up to $858,000, and obviously, that all equates to rates someday. That's another part of the concern. But good dialogue. Anybody else got anything, any, what would the council like to do? Councilman Munz.
Thank you, Mayor. I, recommended action, authorize the mayor to sign amendment number seven to the professional services agreement with Equinox Research Consulting International for Archaeology Services related to the new wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $253,240, increasing the total contract amount from $604,969.10 to $858,209.10.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Munz as on our board up there, recommended action. I won't read it all over again. I'll give that second to Mayor Protim Pagau. Any other discussion, input? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Item number eight B, clean water facility, Corolo Engineers. City engineer, Joe Stowell.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't go anywhere. You guys caught me for a little while, at least. This amendment here with Corolo, we talked about at the workshop, it's really, it's about the interpretive center, really. That's the whole point of it. This is a summary of previous amendments. There's more detail to this in your packet. That's the reason why it's so thick. But we're on amendment number 15, and this one is related to the interpretive center that we are including in our administration building, and it's effectively the left half of that building, and it goes all the way to the back where the door is. It's a good amount of floor space, and we're going to be working with MWA architects to develop, actually, I've got a slide here that goes through it. We're going to be reviewing, and it's much more extensive. I tried to paraphrase what their scope is, but effectively, they need to review what programs are already available in Oak Harbor and what is missing. They're going to develop some goals and objectives, you know, help us through that. What do we want to achieve with the interpretive center? And then develop a draft exhibit plan that's a document that we can work from to actually produce the displays. It goes into more things, like what kind of media are we going to choose? Is it going to be a television screen? Is it going to be hands-on? Does it make noise? Do you flush it? I mean, what is it that you, you know, what is it that you want to have? And that's only partially a joke, because a lot, they have, the restroom has different examples of low-flow toilets, so it's not a joke. Actually, my personal favorite is, I wish it was tall enough to put a slide in there, because there's someplace in Japan that has a slide that looks like a toilet, and you get to see all kinds of things. But it's very interesting. You ought to look it up. It surprised me. But that's the kind of sense of humor I have, so I-
That's a great visual. Move along.
Yeah, sorry about that. I got stuck on that. So the interpretive center, well, we also, I mean, it's nice to do it, but we also have a need for it. Our different utilities between the different permits have requirements for public outreach. And we're always under some sort of pressure to either do some outreach for the, you know, sewer or storm, or reaching out to the public. This would give us a perfect avenue to meet that requirement. It's also a nice introduction when you're going to visit the treatment plant for a tour. We're going to include, as I just, you know, discussed before, cultural resources, whether that's American Indian, Dutch, and everything in between, and maybe, you know, cultural resources, where are we headed to? I mean, I'd like to see that in there. And then, as I discussed earlier, the post office oak tree is going to be included in the architecture and features inside the interpretive center for all to see. And that's a, that's a short suite of it. It's a $40,000 contract, which extends Corolo's contract and amount. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Okay, I'll open this up to the public for any input, going once, twice. Okay, we're back to the council. Clean water facility, Corolo Engineers, consultant agreement, amendment number 15. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Almberg.
Thank you. This amendment is really architectural work by their subcontractors, is that correct?
Yes.
It's not really engineering mechanical work going on?
It's integral to the building, however, so-
Right, no, I understand that, but it's, this is mostly goes to, what's the name of the architect working through them?
Jeff McGraw.
Yeah, okay. So that's what I want to clarify. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Any input? Any motions? Any other dialogue? Councilman Servatius?
Just to keep things moving along, I move to authorize the mayor to sign contract amendment number 15 with Corolo Engineers in the amount of $40,215, increasing the total contract amount from $16,772,927 to $16,813,142.
Second.
So our motion is exactly like the recommended action reads up there for you all to read, made by Councilman Servatius and seconded by Councilor Munz. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're on a roll now, Joe Stowell. Item number eight C is clean water facility, general contractor, construction manager, GPM amendment number eight.
So if we're having, if we're having consternation about who is going to make the motion on the previous ones, this will be a fun one for me. This is one of the largest contracts that we've ever proposed to council, and it keeps the plant moving along. So I'm going to go, this is really the same slideshow I went through at the workshop, so if you, I'll breeze through it. If you have questions, I can answer them at the end, but it's effectively the same one. There was no reason really to change it too much. So YGCCM on the project, it's an alternative project delivery. We chose this because it reduces the risk on the project. It allows us to move design and construction forward at a similar pace and get the contractor's feedback earlier. The selection of the contract, of the contractors based on fee in addition to other factors, and as I mentioned at the workshop, and I'd like to highlight it again, Hoffman hit a home run. They knocked it out of the park. Their written proposal was ranked highest. Their interview, they ranked the highest, and their proposal was the best. So on all three counts, they just knocked it out of the park. And so their fee to manage the construction of this project is 4.28%, which includes bonds and insurance, which equates to roughly 2%. So their actual profit is, looks right around 2.28%. That becomes relevant a little bit later in the conversation. So we're about that far right now, and as you know, design and construction have moved along nicely together. I guess I did that kind of fast. I expected more to show up on there. So we still got a bit more to go. We got a couple more GMPs, and we got some, the Wind Gemmer Park Integration Plan to implement, but we're meeting our milestones that we'd hope to. GMP eight summary, it's broken into a whole bunch of different categories. There's the direct cost of construction, that's $7 million. There's negotiated support services, which are the things that the general contractor provides, like sandy huts and fencing. There's a risk contingency, which is required by state law. It's 3.5%. That's kind of where it stayed through each of the GMPs. That risk contingency is only used if there's a scope gap between contractors or something that comes up that's out of anybody's real control. We've got something to pull from to keep the project moving forward. We have an honor contingency of 2%. That's for when we make changes that we like, and that would be, an example might be as if we started out with regular keys and decided to go with the card lock. That's a change that we would have made, and that's not the responsibility of the contractor to take that on. There's specified general conditions. Those were bid. That's, that was an estimate of the amount of effort that Hoffman would take to manage the project, and what you would expect on a, at that early stage, that the general contractor would be able to estimate. And then there's the fee, the GCCM fee of 4.28%. So the total for this GMP is $10,824,756. And then you add on to that some tax, and you're on $11.8 million. So I'm going to, well, talk a little bit about the scope of work. It's, and I've got some graphics in it that show the Area 30 and Area 20, the first two. It allows for the outfall construction we've been talking about a couple times with archaeology and closing City Beach Street. There's a reconciliation that we had to do. A previous GMP, we, GMP seven, we estimated what the amount of that, the cost of that work would be when we got into it and looked at all the complications with that part of the work. The price wasn't what we thought it was, so when we got bids, we had to adjust- wasn't what we thought it was, so, um, when we got bids, we had to adjust, um, our assessment of that. With the concrete that we're putting in, there's miscellaneous pertinences, uh, whether it's door jams or, um, anything that needs to be embedded for later that, that you don't wanna try and bolt in, onto the outside. Crane rental, operator rigor and Bellman through, um, one fifteen, twenty eighteen, and that is a substantial amount of, um, the negotiated support services. Brett, was it like a million? So it's, uh, renting that crane is not an inexpensive endeavor, but that gives you an example, about a million of, of the contract tonight is just support of that crane. And then it's support services from Hoffman through the end of the year. So I'm gonna get into the direct costs a little bit more, 'cause this is, is, uh, unique. The negotiated work is the top two lines, and that adds up to about six point four million dollars. And that's allowed by, uh, RCW to do that, and basically what it is, we negotiated the work as actual cost plus fee. We're able to do that successfully based on, uh, our GMP number seven and our experience to date. I'm locked up here. Oh, there we go, thank you. So, why are we using heavy civil? Greater control of schedule, fewer change orders because the contractor is directly involved in the design and, um, is aware of many of the risks that, uh, going in. Reduction in management costs because you don't have, you're, you're basically cutting to management staff from whatever sub that you would've, have contracted with. And there's a larger versus, a, a larger number of knowns versus unknowns in the work, so, concrete we can measure, rebar we can measure, and then the last thing left is manpower. So, it's a really good, really good, um, package to have them self-perform because we can track it real well, and we talked about that earlier, about how things are working pretty smoothly for GMP seven. And there's increased ability to find savings, if we find a better way of, of doing something like we did with GMP seven, we, we saved us a hundred and seventy thousand dollars because we were able to reduce the, the footprint of the sump that we showed in the video earlier on. Uh, because of that, we saved a fair amount of, of, I shouldn't say saved, we reduced the cost of the project a bit. He's not paying attention to me. Oh, he always nails me on that one. So, uh, GMP seven, the self-perform work is basically the floor and the, the walls around the outside. Uh, the graphics kinda cool, I think they, they prepared that for us, you can, where we're standing is, um, kinda flying above the Woodbale and Bank building, and you have the crane on the far corner. And, uh, you can see the, the white, um, sheet piles around the outside, then the gray interior, uh, concrete walls. To the right is the Aeration Basins closer to us, or where the membranes will be. That's a picture of what it looked like this afternoon. So, you can see where the crane is, it's not quite as high as the other picture, if I had my little drone, I could've got you a better picture, but, um, you can see how things are coming together. And then ultimately, what, uh, GMP eight is intended to do is put the divider walls in for the Aeration Basins and the membrane tanks, and then to the top left, the dark blue up there is the, the, all the un-intricate underground work for headworks. What was that? Oh, yeah, the, the slabs on top, uh, basically putting a lid on all those tanks. That's an important part, 'cause that's kinda a tough one to do. So, how did we go about, uh, validation? I mean, one of the things, uh, state law requires that we do, make sure that we're getting what we paid for, so how do we go about that? So, uh, we had some experience doing this last time around with GMP seven, so, working with them to come up with a reasonable amount for GMP eight wasn't terribly difficult. KBA, uh, validated the, the cost, that the cost is reasonable, and provided us with a letter stating as much. And then the cost accounting, and we talked about that earlier, we have a system in place to track, you know, when they, we negotiated this work, we had a schedule of how this was gonna play out, and we're gonna track that. How many pours did they get this week? How many yards of concrete did they pour this week? And how many man-hours were on the job? And how does that compare against the original schedule? Why is it different? Why is it behind? Why is it ahead? So that we have a good idea, and we talk about that, um, every Tuesday morning after the regular meeting, uh, sit down and just have a conversation about where things are at, so we're all on the same page. I don't know what to do without my slide working, Tim. What am I doing wrong? Oh, I was just taking time to catch up. So, we asked, um, let me get back to where it was. Okay, so it's, uh, you know, in it, in the negotiated part of the work, Hoffman is proposing eight percent fee, it's the same fee, uh, that they proposed on GMP seven, it's above and beyond the two and point two eight percent that they get on a regular project. So, why is that appropriate? Well, Hoffman, Hoffman's assuming a greater risk, that's not being put off to the subcontractor who would be charging us the eight percent or, or better. If the concrete work were bid, the, the profit, uh, would be included in there, the city benefits because we get to see the open books. All the bills that come through, um, uh, we get to check everything, cost savings that we find go back to the city. And, uh, is the fee reasonable, uh, in talking to Hoffman? And I just did a, an average of the lowest bid on the jobs that they had, um, presented, and they were, around six percent was what we saw for self-perform fee. On our project, it's eight. But there's, they make up the difference in the GCCM fee, you'll see that the average on other jobs is four point eight five, uh, we're paying about two point two eight if you take out the bonds. So that's, that's within the ballpark, reasonably close. Our, um, GCCM advisor, OAC, what did they have to say? The regional average is eleven point two seven percent for heavy civil, national average is nine point nine, so that's still within check of the eight percent. How does this, how does Washdot look at this? Uh, they look at things a little bit differently over there, but essentially, if you're to do this as force account work, they would be looking at seven percent profit, uh, built in, that's, uh, their guidelines. So, um, what does it do to reduce the, the, what are the potential cost savings or reductions on the project? Shorten budget, bidding duration, you wouldn't have to have two cranes because a sub would bring in their own crane to do a lot of this work. Management staff is reduced, city realizes all the, the, the cost savings, and, uh, any changes in the scope of work, we see the actual plus fee as, as, uh, directly back to us. I'm trying not to make you sleep, usually I'm more entertaining than this, but there's, this is good info. So this is a summary of Hoffman's contracts to date. So you'll see, and these are all, uh, without sales tax, and, um, right now, we're looking at a total of about thirty-seven and a half million dollars in contracts if you award GMP eight tonight. And with that, if you have any questions?
Let's ask the public, make sure, going once, twice, any public input, okay. Council, thirty-seven million, what do you think about that? Councilman Almberg.
I'll tell you what I think about it. Actually, I have a couple of questions here for you, Mr. Stowell. First of all, when you go down to that project, it is really a well-coordinated project, and that is kudos to Hoffman, KBA, our staff, Brett, you, Joe, I mean, it, it is a beautifully choreographed, organized, um, facility, uh, project. Now, I'm not gonna throw a rain cloud on that comment and say but, I'm not saying that at all, I do have a question. You gave me a breakdown that we discussed in our, um, workshop, August sixteen, or August twelve break, uh, breakdown I have here. And, everything in the direct cost work remained the same from the draft, and, and credit to you, you wrote draft on the top of that page. Then we get down to, um, negotiated support services, which is a Hoffman, it went from one million five hundred and thirty thousand nine thirty-four, went up two hundred and four thousand dollars, and that trickles down, that's, that's a thirteen point four percent increase in negotiated, um, support services. And then it trickles down to the bottom of the project, so it, by the time you throw in sales tax, the whole thing goes up to two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Can you tell me specifically what caused negotiated support services to go up thirteen point four percent from the draft, and you have all kinds of staff, you have Hoffman behind, you have KBA, you have Brett there, I mean, we have, we have loaded guns behind us.
I'm gonna call in some help, I do, you know, you did mention that Hoffman is here, I, I do have Trevor Teese and, and Brian Shirley here with me, and, and also Brett Arvidson from staff, but I'm gonna look back and see if, um, Trevor, would you, do you have a, an answer for Mr. Almberg?
Well, I'm not sure about the one point five million dollar number, um, but the, the biggest-
Let me, let me just bring it to your attention.
Sure.
I'm looking at Hoffman Construction's printout for the dated, uh, twelve August, and it's for GMP number eight, it's the one that we discussed, you and I discussed at the workshop in August. And I looked down at negotiated support services, and it's one million five hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, and under this one that's being presented here today, it's one million seven hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred and thirty, it's about two hundred and, two hundred and four thousand five hundred, and then it, it trickles down by the time you get down and you put in, uh, GMP risk and, and owner's design risk and sales tax. And my numbers show that the bottom line compared to what was presented in the draft is, is, um, before tax, is ten million five hundred and ninety-nine seven hundred and seventy-one compared to ten million eight hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six. Those are, those are Hoffman numbers.
Okay, I, uh, if the, the draft you're looking at, does it also have the tower crane isolation wall and the tower crane rental broken out separately? Okay, what we, uh, determined we required, as we went deeper into the, um, management of this particular portion of the con, of the contract, is we're getting into more concurrent concrete work, where, you know, that's really the kind of, uh, that's where we have to do our best, as far as making sure we have a structure that can, uh, retains water. I believe since that previous draft, we added a QA QC lead person specific to concrete work, and that's, he's on the, the breakdown, that was, uh, that is-
You have QA QC lead for twelve months in here at a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in your draft. It, you know, it was a big number that jumped out.
And I, I, so, Mr. Almberg, I'd have to go, really go back and look, I don't recall at this time what did make it jump, but there, there was some last-minute adjustments we had, and I-
Brett, or KBA, somebody else, I mean, that's a-
I wish I-
That's a big, I think it's a big leap from a draft when it was a detailed, um, that it was a detailed breakdown, even the summary is, is very comprehensive, and, and I appreciate that, I, I know this council member does, and I think the rest of us do too. But a, uh, a thirteen point four percent jump from that draft in negotiated support services, there's gotta be something administrative in there that caused that leap.
Yeah, I just don't recall what it is right now, so I just, I'd have to make a comparison of the two.
I think we add, we also add some extra engineering services into that, and, you know, probably another project that we're in, and shifted some of the cost to work from the, it's actually advantage, it was actually shifted some of the work from the contract work into the NSS, we don't pay double profit.
You know, I, I'm not following any of that.
Well, well, here's what, so, uh, I think we did talk about some of this at workshop, there were some items that we were having that were in Hoffman's structures, general conditions breakdown for their self-perform concrete work, their own general conditions costs, and we, rather than continue to carry it in their general conditions, which would have an eight percent markup, we elected to perform it in their behalf, under the negotiated support services, where you're only subject to the four point two eight percent GCCM fee, not the eight. So, uh, part of that was a potential relocation of, if they had to relocate a staff member to accommodate the concurrent work, we said if that is a risk to your exposure, we'll pay for that out of negotiated support services. So that was a transfer we made, I know that's one of them. But I'd really like to, it'd be best for me just to kinda go through and do a detailed comparison from one to the other, and I, right now, I don't have that.
I don't wanna hold this project up, believe me, it's, it's expensive enough, and holding it up makes it more expensive. But when you're talking about Hoffman's structures, the, the concrete work in area three, thirty and twenty, that's the concrete work.
Yes.
That didn't change. Not in those items. They're the same in your presentation here, and they're the same in the draft, the only thing that changed was, uh, negotiated services.
Yeah, so, again, I'd like to look at it, but, and also, keep in mind, the negotiated support services is a reimbursable to a, to a max, so it's, they're, it's, we're setting forth a budget to the best of our ability to support the work that is about to go into play. But it's not a lump sum amount, I wanna make sure that's clear.
I, I understand that, but we're, you're asking the council to approve a quarter of million dollars, that is an increase on administrative, which is negotiated support services, mo, more, more mostly. And, and I'm just, I just wanna know where that number came from, 'cause a thirteen point four percent jump is, should be identifiable. And explainable.
I, I can, I can have a detail of that by ten o'clock tomorrow morning.
So then how do we deal with this one? I don't wanna hold the project up, so give us some guidance on, 'cause I, I personally don't wanna vote for that amount when there's a gap that I don't really understand.
So, I guess what I might suggest is, you don't sign the amendment, you might approve the motion, contention upon the detail being provided, and then you don't sign the amendment until that detail is provided to you.
What I would suggest is, um, like, um, Trevor said, this is a time of materials, what we would do then, if we found something that we can work with you, we would actually write a contingency memo, put that in, and that becomes a, a hard, fast deduct to the contract.
Well, help us, help us with the, with the motion then to isolate that item, and, you know, it, it, I don't wanna make this more complicated than it needs to be, but I don't, I don't think we should just walk away from a recognized gap, at least in my opinion, it's a gap that's not explained or explainable right now.
Well, there's a, there's a couple things that I'd like to bring up, one, what you were looking at is a draft that was still early on in negotiations, the one that I came to the workshop with last time has the one point seven million in it.
Well, this is, this is the one that we had at the workshop.
That's the one you had at the workshop.
That's the one you gave to me for the workshop, and this is the one that had all my notes on it, and we discussed it with the, with Hoffman and with you.
Right, which we discussed at a previous working group meeting, and things changed. So, what Brett was trying to identify is that anytime we have issues that come up, whatever they might be, whether it's a, a cut, did you find it?
Yeah.
All right, might as well speak up.
Yes, what happened was, uh, you know, at, at the workshop, we told you we were still making some changes, and we had originally had put a forklift operator in the Gardner, who's our crane contractor, we decided at that point, in terms of the NSS, to, to bring a forklift operator onto our NSS staff, and this also does other things too, but that's, uh, the main cost.
So forklift operator came up to two hundred and four thousand dollars?
Well, it's a big hunk of it, uh, Mr. Almberg, it's a hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars. So we went when, what I would call a casual forklift, in other words, available for the use of multiple trades, we pay for the rental, but it's available to the trades.
Yeah.
We had enough use in that forklift, and we had a safety concern where we wanted to control all the use of that forklift, so it, at, after that one, you saw- So it, after that one you saw, we added 191,500 for HSI operator for that forklift. But that's a big piece of it.
Okay. And, and you, you answered the question. It's all I wanted to know is where did that money come from or what it was, what was it compared to what we were using in a draft? And Joe, in fairness to you, I really appreciate you sharing a dra, a draft with me, and I don't mean to hit, bang anybody over the head with this. I, I really don't. You know, I trust you guys. When we get information, if I get information, I spend the time going through it. And a lot of it I don't understand. That's why you get a lot of questions. Okay? So that, that explains in the Support Services that goes into, and that's not just a little warehouse forklift either, by the way. It's more in the category of a small lift or crane or, you know, in that category, I would imagine. Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Other input, other questions? Yes, Mayor Protius.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stoll, under the same page, not the same subject, but on the direct cost and negotiated Support Services, there are two contingencies, the GMP risk contingency and the owner contingency, which amounts to about 510,000 dollars. If they are not used, that represents savings to the city?
We, at the end of the project, will do an amendment that will credit that back to the city.
Credit it back. Would that adjustment, if they're not used, would there be adjustment on the tax? There's a specified tax here of 8.7.
There'd be a trickle down effect, yes.
All adjustments made to that. Thank you.
Good question. Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Can you back up one slide, I think it is? Maybe one more where you're talking about the, the, there's probably several back then, the average rate of 4.85 versus Hoffman's 4.28, but 2% of that was bonds. So is it, isn't it fair to assume that the average job in the area at 4.85, they too are paying the bonds, the insurance out of that 4.85?
I couldn't say.
Okay. I just, you know, I went onsite for Hoffman. Trevor's, is that a, they're not? Okay. I was just gonna say, going through their Green River site, sitting in on the interviews, very impressed with Hoffman. I had a mentor that told me you can always find it cheaper if you're willing to take that risk. And so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't trying overly hard to justify that 8%, but if you're fairly confident in the industry, Mr. Teese is back there saying that, that wouldn't necessarily include the cost of insurance and bonding. So you made that point pretty strongly, and like I said, I know they're doing a good job, and I don't wanna have to go too far down the rabbit hole trying to prove that they're doing a good job. And I appreciate Mr. Almberg's tough questions. You had some numbers. It sounds like that we didn't, so. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion, input? So could you go back to the recommended action?
See if I can do this in appropriate way. I move that we approve the recommended action as presented on the screen.
Cheater. So we have a motion by Counselor Wassinger to-
We'll have to do that, alright.
-the recommended action as written on the screen, and a second by Counselor Muntz. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay. Good discussion. No nine, we're on to 10, our last, last couple of items, reports and discussion items. 10A, mandatory council review of LTAC membership, OHMC 266030. And we have Dr. Merriman, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Agenda Bill 10A is the mandatory annual council review of our LTAC membership. This is a requirement in Old Harbor Municipal Code in Chapter 2.66, and it's an annual process where city council can look at our staffing on the LTAC committee. And if you see any adjustments that need to be made, you can do so now. Just a couple of points on the lodging tax committee roster that's provided, I believe it's Page 829 on your agenda packets. There are two places. First, earlier tonight on the consent agenda, on the right-hand column at the bottom, you have Ashley Byrd. She was just appointed on the consent agenda tonight. So that was one new change that was made earlier. The second one is you notice Mr. Lundstrom in the first column, about three down, his term expires later this year on December 31st. Now, I would usually go, just to go ahead and open this up for council to have these discussions. I know there might be some discussions about Mr. Lundstrom's position there, so I'll do whatever I can to answer questions you have.
Okay. Yes, Counselors, your bid.
Thank you, Dr. Merriman, for introducing that. I asked Dr. Merriman earlier, we'd had some back and forth, we had an application from Kristin Kelts, who's actually the manager of the Candlewood Suites. And I'll take the responsibility that we didn't get the communication had with Mr. Lundstrom. I'm not so sure that she might not have checked with him. I'm making an assumption here, but I'd like to get a phone call out to Mr. Lundstrom since his term is expiring to see if there wasn't an intent there maybe to have her replace him. So before we approve this slate, if it's not time sensitive, it might make sense, if it's appropriate, I can make the motion to table it or something. But I would like to see a, a confirmation phone call made to Mr. Lundstrom since his term is expiring and he has one of his managers, or his manager, Mrs. Kelts, from Candlewood that's applied as well, to see if we didn't just miss a communication there that maybe that was his intent.
Do we have a recommended action for this item?
No, there's no recommended action.
Okay. Counselor Ken.
If, if his, if Mr. Lundstrom's term expires on the 31st of December, that's a long way past 45 days. If we approve this tonight, we've got 45 days to get done, don't we?
No, that is, the next agenda bill we'll talk about is a 45-day requirement. That is something different than the roster review by city council.
I understand that, but if we approve that 45-day limit, his, his expiration date is well beyond that. So I don't think expiration date of his term is an issue.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Wassinger.
So do we, as a council, per the, this code, it says it requires us to review the roster or membership roster on an annual basis. Do we need to, per the code, take an action and approve the roster before, you know, their 45-day starts?
Not really. You don't have to approve anything here. The requirement in the code is just to have the discussion. The only time you would take any action is if you wanted to remove somebody from the roster.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Counselors, your bid.
So I would say at this point, we take no action, but yourself, Nikki, myself, the mayor, who would, we have reach out to Mr. Lundstrom just to make sure that he hasn't already maybe had this conversation with his manager.
We can, we can bring that back. Tonight's discussion just itself suffices for our code requirement.
Okay.
So we're good there. We can bring back a change in membership at any time.
Okay.
So we can continue that discussion, get that answer, or we can come back and do an appointment of the new person to the position. That'd be the, the easiest way to do it.
Counselor Wassinger.
One more regarding that. So if we do reach out to him and there is an intention to, to change or, or for him to move on, are we, can we make that change during the 45-day period?
Yes.
Okay.
10B, 2017 LTAC 2% grant program referral to council, 45-day period.
Okay, Mr. Wassinger, I do have a note here that you do have to open up that last item for public hearing.
Oh, the mandatory council review?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll have, we'll, we'll go back to that and have a public hearing. I'd like to ask if anybody from the public would like to weigh in on that. Mandatory council review, hearing, let me see, going once, going twice? No public input. Okay. Now we're at 10B, 2017 LTAC 2% grant program referral to council, 45-day period.
Okay, I will go ahead and take this one as well. What this part is, is under state law, there are some steps we have to go through each year when we're doing any changes to our lodging tax funds. Now, change can be spending it on something new, doing a different amount of tax, anything that has to do, if you touch those LTAC monies, that's considered a change. And so then we have to have these discussions. The first step you do, if there's gonna be any kind of change, is city council has to refer to the LTAC that we wanna do a change. And the reason why is the state put in a 45-day rule, and that's what we kinda touched on a minute ago. So anytime city council refers something to the LTAC, you start a clock and you have to wait 45 days before you act on their answer. And so in this case, when we're looking at what we're gonna spend in 2017, we will make that referral to the committee to consider our grant program or to consider any other uses or changes in that money, have those discussions, and then we have to wait the 45 days before council can take action. Now, during that 45 days, the LTAC can meet, they can have their deliberations, interviews, all those things can still be going on. It's just you as a legislative body can't take action on whatever the recommendations are back to you. And that's what that 45 days. So tonight's action is essentially to start that clock ticking. Now, there are a couple other things you wanna do when you make the recommended action to them. If there are any stipulations you wanna make on what they're gonna address, now's the time to do that. For example, in the past, we would say, city council refers to the LTAC, the Support Services Agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for Tourism. So then they would deliberate that and send back a recommendation to council. Or we would say, we're gonna set aside 15 or 16 or 20,000 dollars for our LTAC grant program. That would go to the LTAC committee. We'd wait the 45 days. They would come back with their slate of different programs to fund. Council would take action. So that's how that works. Last year, we did a little bit differently. We freed up some additional monies. We did 250,000 dollars for the LTAC to consider last year. There were two pieces to that. The first one was 100,000 dollars, which was for the Chamber of Commerce's Tourism Support Agreement. It's an annual amount. In addition to that, we did another 150,000 dollars for the grant program. That includes things like the marathon, driftwood days, the different types of social and community type events like that, that we have, that we used LTAC money on. So that's where we're at tonight. One is to start the clock ticking on the 45 days. And under the recommended action, for example, I think what our staff recommendation was, would be to repeat last year. And that is to set aside 250,000 dollars. 100,000 would be most likely for the Chambers Tourism Support Agreement. I did speak with Christine Cribb today, and she said that would be the, the same amount. They weren't looking for that amount to be raised or anything like that. So we would consider that. In addition, that leaves 150,000 dollars to be put towards any other applications that come in for LTAC funding. That would get us going on this process. Now, I have been asked a couple of questions. What happens if we get a lot of applications in it and we need more money? We can always come back to city council and say, you know, we think 180,000 dollars would be better to give us some more. You have to start that 45-day clock again, but you do have that ability to add money if you need to in the future. This isn't an end-all. You make this action, you can't make any changes to it. So really what the recommended action would be is pretty much what is stated on the agenda bill with the inclusion of a staff recommendation that you put a 250,000 dollar limit on the amount that is sent to LTAC on this cycle. I can answer any questions on that.
Just need a public, do you think? Okay. Any, any public weigh-in, going once, twice? Okay, back to council. Yes, Counselor Serbadius.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Merriman, well, first of all, thank you. You were very helpful in getting me up to speed, and also I wish Anna was here. Anna was incredibly helpful revamping the application to try and make that process a little more straightforward and transparent. So thank you to both of you. The, you, you talked about here on the last page, the estimated revenues to be received by the end of 2016 is 82,000 and change. Traditionally, I thought we pulled in, I don't know why the number of 200 sticks in my head. Is that correct?
Pretty close to that. Mm-hmm.
So these, should that say remaining revenues? We've already gotten some, or is that the total for 2016?
Yeah, this is for 2016. As you noticed, I put in there cash as of July 31st. So what that includes is any revenues we've received from January 1 to this point.
Okay.
And so of that 206,000, the difference in that's left to reach that number is the 82,515.
Got it. Thank you. And I guess that was it at the moment. No, pause. Thank you.
Counselor Wassinger.
I don't know why this, this is coming to me, but do we have a multi-year, I, I don't know why I thought that we did this in the past, I wasn't here, obviously, for that ongoing cost for the chamber, that 100,000, is that sort of like a multi-year-
You are correct.
-contract? Okay. And would, can we continue that if we choose tonight? Is that something we need to add in to our-
You don't need to tonight, but what you would get is, the chamber knows this, and I spoke to them, their contract expires the end of this year.
Okay.
So they'll be coming forward with a recommendation or a request to probably do another multi-year contract for a similar amount.
So they have to make that request to the LTAC committee and then it will-
Correct.
-come back to us after our waiting period.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Other questions, input?
I had another one. So this reserve, if you will, that we have, which is, is quite a bit, is that something that sort of just sits in sort of like a special revenue fund that, can it be earmarked for something, obviously in the guidelines of, of following the rules for the LTAC monies, but is, is that something that just sort of builds in a reserve? Or what are the requirements for that money that, that sits there?
Mm-hmm. It follows the same stipulations and rules that we talked about for any awarding. The city can also apply for this money. It seems odd sometimes that we have to make an application for money the city receives, but we're subject to the same rules as anyone else. We've had discussions in the past, going back even 20 years ago, we used to talk about building a plaza on the corner of Dock and Pioneer. Used to be called the Clock Tower Project, 'cause there was a, a clock tower on that project. That project went away, but we've had later discussions about the Windjammer Park Improvement Plan. Are there things we could use 2% money there for, for tourism? If we wanna build a community room, would a section of that be eligible for 2% money? So those are things where we may maintain some of those reserves, but it's always good to be looking at what projects can we use to maximize those dollars somewhere. But we don't wanna at the same time put them all out on the table in one year and lose them all, and then, I mean, it took us many years to build up that reserve, so.
Thank you.
So, yes, Mayor Protius.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on the same page now, the same subject, the city can make a request to earmark certain amount of money, just like what the city of Langby has done, like setting aside 1% of the LTAC money to build a restroom.
Mm-hmm.
So that can be done also.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Muntz.
Dr. Mayor, when you talk about the city can apply for it, so a department such as the Marina that has guests coming in, if they have a specific project, then that department can apply for, instead of just something in general, it could come from that one department then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I can see the wheels turning. Yes, Counselor Serbadius.
If, I'm just making sure no one else has comments. Dr. Merriman, tell me then if this would suffice for the requirements of the statute and what staff would need to start this ball rolling then. I move to authorize the, or recommend the LTAC committee a budget of 250,000 dollars for the 2017 awards. Is that what you're looking for?
If you have the agenda bill, and under the recommended action-
Right.
-to make sure we get the proper wording in there, it would be good to make a motion to refer potential changes in the use of lodging tax. changes in the use of lodging tax, those changes we talked about.
Okay, I see that.
For review and comment with a total allocated amount of $250,000.
Super, thank you. So I move to refer potential changes in the use of the lodging tax 2% funds to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee of $250,000 for review and comment?
Correct.
Second.
So I don't have that motion available to read over again.
Can I restate?
Yeah, could you restate it one more time?
Yes, sir. I move to refer potential changes in the use of the lodging tax 2% funds to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee of $250,000 for review and comment.
Okay, so the motion made by Counselor Servadius and seconded by Counselor Muns. Any questions or discussion further?
I'm sorry, I have a question. So do we also, though, need to add in there the 100,000 of those monies designated?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, that will come from the LTAC as a recommendation from the applications they receive.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. So we have a motion and a second. No more discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Last item of business would perhaps be to adjourn.
Let's adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Counselor Servadius, right?
That's what I was going to say, yes.
Second by Counselor Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous.